Good evening. Welcome to our February 13th Board Work Session. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors, if we have any administrators, or anyone on the leadership team in our school buildings. If you would just wave or stand so we can say hi and recognize you. Of course, we always have Alan Harkness from the Director of Library and Mary Ann Rickner, Director of the Museum. And thank you all for joining us. So we'll go right on into our work session meeting. Our first item up is our public agenda. We do have five speakers who signed up to speak, and I will call you in the order that you appear. While you're making your way up, I will read you our our policy here. First up is Robert Merrick or Marak. Are you here? David Young. If you would come to the podium. "All official meetings of the Board shall be open to the press and the public. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the Board Agenda." Don't have one of those meetings. "To initiate a presentation or issue of that of Board concern, Board meeting is not the appropriate place to review individual employee performance or individual student issues that have not been addressed by the Principal or the Superintendent." "Citizens are encouraged to follow our normal channel to request to appear on the public agenda through the Superintendent's Office and with Ms. Karen Jones. And each speaker will have five minutes." All right, Mr. Young, go right ahead.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Wanted to talk a little bit about some charges that students are being made to pay at school to carry book bags. I have two children at Shaw High School. If you want to carry a book bag to Shaw High School to class, you have to buy a PTA book bag. $15 to pay for this book bag. You're not allowed to carry yours. Yours has to stay in your locker or leave it in the hallway. Do not bring it in the class. So I questioned why that was. They said that they're limited on space. And of course, a school mascot bag, of course, promotes the school and everything. But charging us, as that sounds good, but charging us $15 should not be the case in a public school. And if you want to promote the school, that's all great. So they have a pep rally during school hours. Pep rally slash basketball game. Students play the teachers. But if you didn't pay, you're not going. You have to sit in a class with an unassigned teacher, or not your regular teacher, I mean, and make up your schoolwork while everybody else gets to go to the pep rally and the basketball game. So I went to the Principal, I went to the Region Chief, now I'm coming to the School Board. I'm hoping y'all can set some policies to stop this kind of stuff. We're paying a lot of money to the school districts already with our taxes, but you're charging us to carry book bags and go to pep rallies. So hopefully y'all can get together and work on that point. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Our next speaker is Ms. Teresa Alamein. Tony Villegas. Likewise, sir, you have five minutes.
I'm going to read to save as much time as possible. "This morning, I forwarded emails to each and every one of you regarding my concerns for the current RFP recommendations tonight for the grounds maintenance contract for the school district. I worked all weekend on a detailed chronologically ordered speech to present this evening after I received the notice last Friday afternoon of the recommendation for the contract. I threw that speech away after the phone call I received this morning from the Director of Purchasing, Mr. Edwin Joseph. A little background on our relationship is that we have serviced the district for the last two years up until this last October of 2022. We scored in the top three on the technical proposals in the last two RFPs in 2015 on this contract. This last scoring system rated our company on the technical scoring last and ranked us number two overall after providing the lowest overall price for a section, a price that is $416,167 less than the price that's going to be recommended to spend this evening for the non-athletic portion of the RFP. The proposed recommendation of this award for this project is for two vendors with two different sections for the contract. This recommendation will cost the school district an additional $416,167 by not using the lowest priced vendor, a previous service provider. The first is for the athletic fields being awarded to the lowest priced and least qualified vendor. This company was newly formed in 2021 and went out of business in 2010. After only operating for a few years, they are not filed or registered with the Secretary of State for Georgia as a foreign business, and they do not possess the resources or manpower to complete the project. I attached documents this morning to my email for verification. The other company being recommended is a company called ABM, which you may be familiar with. It is a Fortune 500 company and is headquartered in New York. ABM is a facility management conglomerate which outsources their portfolio for grounds maintenance portion of their services that they provide. I know this because we provided services for them a short period ago when they took over the facility management for a company that we provided services for several years back. They do not own any equipment. They don't have any current local manpower or any local resources needed to complete the project. Their motto is to utilize vendors at a discounted cost and provide billing and management for that oversight at a premium price. On my call to Mr. Joseph today, he informed me that scoring was unbiased and that any previous work relationship with the district had no bearing on the scoring system. He indicated that evaluators were to use specifications of the contract to best identify and provide a scope for that service. I asked him candidly after he explained that rationale to me for 20 minutes over the phone. How could that be possible with three of the five vendors, or excuse me, evaluators, being on the facilities department and us, as well as ABM, interacting with them over the last two years? I also asked, how could a Fortune 500 company, a conglomerate from New York City, score the highest on the technical evaluation possible when they didn't even own a piece of equipment? They have no local resources, no tractors, no mowers, or even any local employees to perform these services. He didn't have an answer, and he said he would look into that for me. On June 15th, 2015, I attended and asked to speak at a board meeting very similar to the one tonight. That night, I was trying to convince the Board, many of you may have been here, not to award the grounds contract to an out-of-state vendor, even though that was going to cost the school district an additional $100,000 that year. I proposed that, they propose it to us, or excuse me, they give this award to us, and I was simply told that they had to go with the lowest price because it saved the school district $100,000. Dr. Lewis actually looked at me during that meeting, and he told me that that $100,000 would afford him one principal, potentially two or three teachers. And it was kind of hard to argue against that. I couldn't agree more. And that's why I asked tonight for some consideration, the same that was given that night, to look at an annual savings of $416,167 a year, 1.25 over the duration of the possible three years if it's continued with the school district. This could provide new athletic equipment, uniforms, money or funding for single parents that are students, and possibly a bonus or raise, potentially, to those administrators and those teachers that are deserving of it. I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. You were right on the money with your timing. And I know the Superintendent wants to have a response, and so we'll do so after our last speaker, Ms. Robbie Hope.
Good evening. I'm glad to see y'all. It's been a long time. I'm here tonight as a concerned, independently, as a concerned taxpayer citizen. And I'm here about Rainey McCullers and sports. Y'all know, because of all the years, how passionate I am about the arts. That's, that doesn't, you don't have to look back to see that. But I also am passionate about sports and what that does for kids, too. It's more of a team-playing one that they don't get in individual sports. And I'm going to look at this because I know I'm on a timer, okay? What does Muskogee County School District have to lose by allowing this student or other students to play sports in their zone school? To have a student that's passionate about an art, the arts and sports, is a win-win if you can offer that opportunity. There are not many that you have like that. And they also have the opportunity for scholarships. It opens up that opportunity for scholarship, whether it's in fine arts or sports. And you're not closing that up. The essence of education is about opening up and exposing yourself to opportunities. They change over time. Time changes how we look at things and things that are available. Rainey McCullers was created to give opportunities to Muskogee County students. And during this creation and development, we didn't have it that they could go to zone schools. We didn't have it, we didn't have on there that they would have dual enrollment opportunities, too. Things have changed. And now they have that. They have it not only with Columbus State, but other schools, too. Clark University, I think Albany State, I can't remember. There are four schools that they can do that online. And we, as citizens and educators, want to be open to giving students opportunities and choices, not taking them away. This leaves it up to the students and the parents, and that's a hard place for them, too. But we know that that can be their choice. It doesn't leave us as people taking away opportunities from them in those years that are so important. And that might not be easy for a student or parents, but they would have to decide it. And it happens in other schools that have fine arts and sports, too. They might have a winning baseball team and a wonderful theater program, and they have to choose all of a sudden that night when that happens. In December, Matt Bell called me, and that's when I found out this was going on. I didn't know, and this had been going on for a while, but I'm retired. It's wonderful. And asked me to look and see what I had, and I see Billy here, and I couldn't find in my files. I told him I wasn't going to look in December. I was retired, but I'd let him know in January. And that he was a ghost of the past. And so Keith called in January. And I did go to my storage and found the few files that I saved, and there wasn't anything. Those were my files about that, because time does change. And we didn't think that they would have sports there. So that, that happened then. What I hope, and I'm not the Superintendent. I don't have to answer like Dr. Lewis does. I understand this much of what he, what he deals with and y'all do. But I'm here for students, and I'm here for the opportunity for them to have that and for me to be able to see this child excel in both of his talents and to have that opportunity to do that. I feel strongly. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Robbie, good to see you. Happy retirement. So I, I do know that you wanted to, that you want to say anything. I, I, the only thing that I wanted to say is we are very fortunate in Muskogee County and that we have these public-private partnerships. And so when schools have students, they support by buying extra or, or supporting schools financially so that if there's a book bag or a uniform or something that is needed by a student and if for any reasons the parents can't pay, choose not to pay, those students are not left out. So we are very fortunate in Muskogee County to have that. And I do know they have such support at Shaw. And I don't know if you had any additional information. Those, those PTA fundraiser type of, of things.
Well, first of all, I just learned of the issue just late this afternoon. So I'll have to do some more research into it because I have not heard about it until today. So I'll have to look into this and go from there because I don't want to. I'll have to look into this and go from there because I don't want to go on what I have heard, just basic information, I want to go back and find out, but absolutely, we want to make sure we're not requiring students to buy any particular item, or anything like that, so I'll have to find out more information, I'll certainly bring that back and we'll address that.
And nor, nor is it, nor is it, nor is, Shaw is not the only school that, that are requiring them to put their bookbags up either, my children's school.
Oh, no, no, that's, that's fairly common.
Yeah, that's very common that they're not carrying their bookbags.
But I just need to look further into it, and I will certainly do that, absolutely.
You have a comment, Ms. Williams?
Yes, I think that any school has the right to require their students to put up their bookbags, or to limit what is brought into a classroom, and they can certainly develop standards
Right.
as to what size bookbags permitted on campus, but to require a student to only carry one type of logoed bookbag that they sell is inappropriate, as is requiring a student to buy a ticket to a pep rally if it's held during school hours. I've never even heard of such a thing, and you know, I'm sure lots of schools would like to have the opportunity for new and innovative fundraisers, but that's not it.
Well, I liken it to, just based on what I've heard today, I liken it to, we require some schools require their students to wear uniforms, we don't say you have to buy this specific uniform, or from this specific vendor.
We're not saying.
All right, Ms. Buckner?
I, I, I mashed my mic to say something else, but I want to respond to what Ms. Williams said.
Speak in the mic.
I want to, to come in on what Ms. Williams said, and I'm not sure what's going on at Shaw, but I do know, I've been in a classroom for 42 years, and I've gone in and out of situations where bookbags were required, and most of those times, bookbags were required, of clear bookbags, for the most part. It was a clear bookbag, and, and each time, the reason that it was required was for a safety reason. Now, I'm not sure what's happening at Shaw, I'm not sure if they're requiring clear versus some other kind, but I do agree you can't, this, the specificity of a logo, and I'm not sure that that's happening.
Right.
I don't understand what's going on, but I do, I don't think that's appropriate, but I don't know what's going on, you know, so, but I do, I don't know whether it's a clear bookbag, but I do know that, that bookbags have been required in all the 42 years that I've been teaching. And also, my kid did it, and where I work, we did it, sometimes there are some fundraisers where kids are not required to go to the pep rally, it's optional. And if, if they went to the pep rally, some schools do require a fee to go in the pep rally, or a fee to go in some other kind of special activity that a kid may have, but that definitely is not a required thing, and I'm, I'm sure that the kids that are not going to the pep rallies, they are in a safe situation, we're not just leaving kids anywhere, I'm sure that, and, and they do have an opportunity to finish work or whatever, but they're not left in a situation, in an unstructured situation, there is a teacher there with them now, whether this board or whether the school system wants to, whether we think that's, you know, inappropriate to have a fundraiser, such a fundraiser, that's another situation, but I do know that this is, this has been done over the years by many schools in many different counties, I worked in three counties, and we did it in three counties.
Well, I think the issue is the specificity of the item and that kind of thing, so I'll certainly look into that.
Okay, we need to check on the specificity of that particular item, and we need to assure these parents that these kids are not being left in an unstructured or unsafe environment because they didn't go to the pep rally. I think they said something about, they're being left with, they said something about it.
A teacher they may not be assigned to during the regular day, I think is what it said, is that correct? Yeah, so it's not they're in unsafe environment, I want to clarify that for everybody, it just may not be a teacher with whom they're affiliated or acquainted with or whatever, if I understood it correctly, is that, yeah, okay, thank you.
Can you email the board members so that we know what the protocol is, what's being required, if anything, of the students, and where, what's the process
Right.
for the pep rally? Is there a charge, where are the kids? And if you email it to us then, before next week, then we can sort of talk about it, or at least explain, because it's hard to give an opinion when we don't have all the facts. So if you would do that, that would be great.
If you could include in that, because I mean, it, it just feels very as if students who perhaps cannot afford the pep rally, or even the backpack, are being segregated in kind of a, I don't know, kind of a mean way, so.
If that's true.
Is, if it's true.
Because you have partners in education.
If it's true, but if it is true, is there a fund that the public can participate in to pay for those students to go to the pep rally at their school during school hours if they can't afford it?
I just need to look into it, yes, I've, I've got my list here, I know Mr. Bell's also writing it down, we're gonna try and pull this together and figure out where we are on this and go from there, but I'll get more information.
What was that, sir? Oh, the, it was a United Way fundraiser, one-time event.
So maybe, yeah, again, we just gotta get more information.
For, all the schools have different types of fundraisers in support of United Way, and so they, you want to, do you have any more information now if you would hit your mic?
Let me, let me just pull all that together and ask all the questions, get all the answers, and respond back to all the board members, I'm glad to do that. Thank you.
All right, and did you have anything?
Only just when you're ready for Rainey McCullers, you want to do that now, or move that up on the agenda, or?
I think, the last conference speaker was about Rainey McCullers, and we do have it on the agenda already for a discussion item, we can wait until then if you don't, so we don't hijack this whole agenda. All right. Our first committee is Education Committee.
Mrs. Green, our first item is, I think we see Mrs. Jones coming right now, she's gonna give us the progress on this CSI and the TSI schools.
I'm Susan Jones, my title is School Transformation Leader, I'm in Teaching and Learning, and I work with the state-identified schools. And part of the requirement is that each year, we give you an update on our state-identified schools. The first thing I wanted to say about this is that the federal government, Department of Education, requires that each state come up with a plan to go over their most needy schools, the ones that are at risk and ones that have subgroup concerns. Okay, I hope I'm going in the right direction, there you go. Okay, at the Georgia Department of Education, they publish a list every year of their identified schools, and they have CSI schools, which is, excuse me, Continuous Improvement and Support, and TSI schools, which is Targeted Support, Improvement and Support. The CSI schools, this is an interesting way of figuring it this year because we didn't have a GMAAS last, the year before. Usually, we have Content Mastery and Progress and Readiness. We do, did have Content Mastery for this year, but since we didn't do the GMAAS the year before, we don't have progress, except for our students who are English Language Proficiency students, our ESOL students, and every year for our ESOL students, we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's a bit of a ring.
It's just kind of echoing, okay.
Oh, am I echoing?
They're already on it.
All righty, every year for our ESOL students, we do an access test, so we did have progress for all of our ESOL students, but the only two schools that are identified that we had that information on was Baker and MLK, so for progress, it only concerns Baker and MLK Elementary. Then the last one is readiness, and that's 5% of the total number of Title I schools with the lowest readiness scores on GMAAS. The Targeted Support and Improvement is a particular area, sometimes it's graduation rate, we, in the past, we've had schools on this list for graduation rate. For this year, we have schools on the list for Special Education, and to meet this criteria, the school must have at least one subgroup that is performing at the lowest 5% of all schools, and at least 50% of the CCRPI components. I'm gonna get into the individual schools in just a minute, but I did want to go first to the schools that were identified for the years 19 through 22. These are the list of the schools, the CSI schools were Baker, Brewer, Dorothy Height, MLK, and Rothschild, and the TSI, that's the subgroup of Special Education, were Carver, Jordan, and Rigdon Road. So we had eight schools at that time, and I'm very pleased and proud of these schools. We, Brewer is off of the list, Rothschild is off of the list, and all three of our TSI schools, Carver, Jordan High, and Rigdon Road Elementary, are off of the list, so we've made some very good definite progress there. For the list, for this school year, we have nine schools, we have six CSI schools, Baker, Davis, Dorothy Height, Eddie, Fox, and MLK Elementary, and then three TSI schools, Diamond, Georgetown, and Lonnie Jackson. And that subgroup area for our TSI schools this year is also Special Education, so we'll be working with the Special Ed Department on that, and our Special Ed Department has already reached out to me, and they've already reached out to the schools to help with that. I did want to share with you the supports that we have in place from the district and the state and the RISA programs, I guess. The first thing, the first support is me, I'm the one that is, basically works with these schools, these nine schools. Then we have district supports, we have Godot supports with our District Effectiveness Specialist, who is Steve Olive, whom I think several of you may know, and then we also have School Effectiveness Specialist, who work directly with the schools, and then RISA folks go into each of the schools as well for supports. So my job entails, particularly with the CSI schools, we are this year starting, we have started having the monthly meetings with the region chiefs, the superintendent, the state folks, and the RISA folks, and talking about all of our schools and what they are doing in their schools, what I'm doing in the schools, what the region chiefs are doing, to make sure that we're covering all bases for those schools. We also develop a district plan of support, I attend the formal Continuous Improvement Team meetings at each of the CSI schools, and attend weekly informal Continuous Improvement Team meetings as often as I can, sometimes I can't make all of those informal ones. We all put, the region chiefs and I, and the content specialist have been very good about attending their collaborative planning sessions at each of the schools and giving feedback. I do walkthroughs in each of the schools and give feedback. We meet collaboratively with Teaching and Learning, the Teaching and Learning Department, and communicate the needs of the CSI schools. For the CSI schools, we are supposed to do over and above what we do for the other schools, and the content specialist, Teaching and Learning in general, Human Resources has been excellent at going above and beyond and servicing these schools. With Chief Academic Officer, we organize Teaching and Learning Specialists to visit the schools' leadership team meetings and complete walkthroughs with feedback, and also to go to the collaborative planning sessions. Then I also make monthly contact with the TSI schools, and that includes the leadership team meetings or collaborative planning and walkthroughs. Then for district support, our region chiefs monitor the school improvement plans and the short-term action plans for the CSI schools. We, this district has assigned me again there, the region chiefs also attend the Continuous Improvement Team meetings as, as often as possible, and I've already said that Human Resources, especially Special Education, Human Resources, Student Services, especially Special Education, Research and Accountability, Title I, Teaching and Learning, and all other district departments and divisions give priority service to the CSI schools. The region chiefs, myself, and the Godot District Effectiveness Specialist, and the Chief Academic Officer meet monthly to review progress with each of the schools and implement the district plan of support, and most recently, the superintendent's meeting with us as well. Okay, the supports from the state are these, we have a School Effectiveness Specialist, whom I said was Steve Olive, and a District Effectiveness Specialist. The CSI schools, you can see that the School Effectiveness Specialist worked with the schools at least three days per week, I'm sorry, I said before, I put Steve Olive in the wrong category a minute ago, but he's the District Effectiveness Specialist. He meets with me monthly, and often meets with Keith and I as well. We go, we create the district plan of support, and we attend the monthly district plan of support meetings. For TSI schools, the School Effectiveness Specialist provide professional development, and then the District Effectiveness Specialist often visits the TSI schools with me. Then we also have RISA supports, Chat Flent RISA is the RISA area that works with our schools. For the CSI schools, they're in the schools every week, and they go, attend the leadership team meetings, they attend collaborative planning, they do walkthroughs with us and give feedback, and have been extremely helpful to us with that. The TSI school's support is provided through, for them as needed, they contact the schools directly, they were going through me, but I've asked them to contact the schools directly, so they don't have to go through me at all. So basically, we have made progress from before this year and gotten several schools off the list completely, we do have a new list, but we are making good progress and have good supports in the schools, and I anticipate we will have some good progress with that as well. The schools that are on this list, I think everyone, as you know, suffered through COVID, and all of our students suffered through COVID, but these are very high-poverty schools, and it really, the COVID really hit these schools very much. Virtual learning is very hard for families who are in poverty, I can remember when we were out for COVID and, and we had virtual walkthroughs where I would get to see on my computer the teacher doing a virtual lesson, and on one side would be the kids there, and you would have middle school kids trying very hard to pay attention to what the teacher was saying, and there would be two toddlers crawling all over them and wanting to play with the laptop and all that stuff, so I applaud what these schools have done through COVID and coming out of it, and I, I feel very confident that they're going to make good progress this year as well, so thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you so much for your presentation. It seems to
It seems to me that you all are doing a lot of meeting. And I know you have to meet to collaborate and things of that nature. But can we get some information on what are we doing from a curriculum perspective, from a personnel perspective, from an instruction perspective, in order to get these schools off the list? I understand that you're meeting with the chiefs, the chiefs are meeting with the principals, and we have a support specialist. But what physically are we doing differently to get these students up to par and to get these schools off the list? So if you could maybe send that to us in an email? What strategies are we using to move the needle forward? The other thing is, you mentioned that part of your job is to remove barriers. Can you also, in that information, tell us what those barriers are for these schools? And then the last thing I would really like to know is, can I get the demographics on these particular schools? Just these schools that are on the list?
Demographics?
Yes.
Okay, all right, will do. One thing that I almost shared with you tonight is the distress communities index. I don't know if you're familiar with that. But I'm, I'll send that to you as well because it's very telling for these particular schools, so, yes.
Ms. Jones, also, I believe our district plan of support, I think, covers a lot of these topics that were referenced by Ms. Chambers in terms of strategies and HR support and that kind of thing. So we can maybe, yeah, maybe just forward that to you, and then if that answers the questions, that's fine. Then we can do, and address as far as the demographics, that probably isn't in there, so we can add that on there.
And in, in honesty, we have removed a lot of those barriers because they do get, HR has done a phenomenal job of giving them act, first access to college students that are coming out in December. So maybe getting them heads up on hiring new teachers coming out. We also have the bonuses for if the school goes off of the list. They get a bonus, which y'all provided for us. And then also, the schools that are hard to, to find teachers, you have a signing bonus, I believe. Is that still in effect, I believe?
Yes.
Yep. So y'all have already done a lot of things to support these schools, and I thank you.
I might point out, one of the things we're talking about, because a lot of the parameters are set by the Federal Department of Education, one of the things we're looking at is this idea of a bottom 5% or 10%. As you might figure out, there's always a bottom 5%. And the same schools are working, and a lot of them are progressing as we've seen here. So one of the things we are trying to advocate is for is, let's set a standard, a threshold, if you will, of what they've accomplished. And let everybody work toward that. When they get that, then we can say they're off these lists or whatever, because there's always going to be that 5%. And part of the problem with the way the process is right now, it, the lists don't come out till November or early December. We're already halfway through the school year, and we don't know which schools are on the respective list. So it gives, it doesn't give you enough time to really do some of the interventions that we'd like to do to make, before we take the test again in April. So it gives us about five months, but we'd like to have a full year. So we're asking for those lists to be generated earlier, for obvious reasons, so we can get them quicker on specific areas of need. But some of those we already know in advance, of course. But when you start looking at these 5% of special need students, whatever, sometimes we have schools that are so small that a group of 15 is considered a subgroup. So that becomes problematic just from the insides of that. So there are a lot of variables in this, but obviously identification earlier on the list. And then secondly, let's set a standard as high as we want to set it, but let's let people aspire to get that. When they get there, instead of competing with each other on this 5%, it's, it's a little bit insidious from the standpoint of, these schools progress. Because one of the things we've seen is, our schools have, many of them have progressed considerably. When you look at their growth during the year, they're getting a year plus a year point two, year point three, year point four, worth of growth of a lot of their students, but they still fall in that percentage because it's just the way it's set up. So it's a little bit problematic from that standpoint, from a mathematical and calculation standpoint. But anyway, that's, that's a longer term conversation. But I want everybody to understand that whole idea of 5%, 10%, and so on.
I have, I have one question. If growth could be the concentrated factor, because that is so important, even if they, if growth could be the concentrated factor, to, to measure where a student started from and where they are. To, to, that, to me means.
We don't do that anymore, Ms. Jones?
Means.
Yeah.
It's not calculated as highly as it should be, in our opinion.
Right.
So we have now submitted.
It should be a concentrate, it should be a focal, in my opinion.
Correct.
Growth should be a focal. But we do do growth. I mean, the state does do growth, and at one time they were doing growth more. So what is the percentage of growth? I mean.
Well, this past year, there was no growth because there was nothing to compare it to.
Well, we didn't have any progress, that's what she said. So when we were, well, that's, she started off with there was no progress. What I want to know, since we can't determine any progress this year, how does the state define those students, those schools? And let me say that I do know demographics are important. Poverty, I understand, you know, environment and, but, some of these schools, that's this, I'm referencing now the CSI schools. I noticed that some came off and some stayed on. So what does the state say to those recurring CSI schools? How long can they continue to recur? Because it sounds like most of these schools have the same demographics, you know, or very similar demographics. Some go off and some stay on. So what, how, what does the state say to a school that recurs? That, let's say that they, they do four or five, how many years can they recur?
Well, they're doing several things right now. They do GSAP, and I'm going to, I'm going to need help with what GSAP stands for. Georgia System of School Improvement, some, but they come in and do a complete interview of all the teachers. They do walkthroughs in every classroom. They go to leadership team meetings and collaborative planning meetings and make a complete review of all of the functions of the school and how they're doing it. And then give us a report, give Dr. Lewis a report about how the school is doing and what needs improvement. So we will get that on particularly any of our new schools. Then every, the existing schools that are CSI schools, they get every two years an update on that, I believe it's two years, something like that.
So one of the things, if I may also say, that the state is right now revising. They've just submitted a plan. I was fortunate to serve on a committee of about eight superintendents to share this concern about needing more focus on growth and some other factors that the calculations are done. With the help of our, Patrick Knopf and his department, we shared our insights into that, what that should look like. That has been revised, and they've submitted it as a revision to our state plan. And right now, it's under review by the U.S. Department of Education, and we'll get that feedback. Unfortunately, again, we're behind this, the test can take place in April, but we don't know how fast USDAOE is going to respond to that request for revision. So that has been submitted. We feel really good about it. The state superintendent, Mr. Woods, and his assessment team felt really positive by the revisions we had requested and made. And now it's just a matter of USDAOE approving those.
As in education, things go around in circles. At one time, growth was very predominant. It was a predominant factor. And then the state changed it and reduced the, the, the impact of growth, and then they did other formulas. So, and, and I'm sure if, if we change it again, it'll probably change again. But they also had, for recurring schools, I, I think a certain number of years that, was it three years or five years that?
It was five years, and that too has been asked to be.
It was three or five years that they would change the principals, change the leadership of it. Is that such a thing now?
No.
Yes.
Okay, there is such a thing. After how many years?
Yeah. I don't know that they have a certain amount, a number of years to do that. But Dr. Lewis has been doing that.
Speaking of microphone.
Baker has a new principal.
Speaking of microphone, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Dr. Lewis has done that, changing principals, the principal of the school. Baker has a new principal this year. Dorothy Height has a new principal this year. I think that may be all the ones that are existing.
How long has she been there? Because I noticed that that one came up, the Rockstyle principal, she's leaving though.
I'm sorry.
How long has that Rockstyle principal been there?
Four, I'm going to guess, is it four years, roughly four years?
About four years, okay, because I just noted that, that school did come off. Okay, so we are evaluating, you know, the leaderships as, as well and making changes.
Right now, the state does not have a prescribed
No.
replacement of principals or whatever. They, they've taken that off the table at this point. However, we still look at that from our perspective.
But that's not, that's not part of the state?
No.
Not anymore.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Or not currently.
Not currently. Not to say it won't change, but they've kind of gone away from that because there have been a lot of problems with that in terms of accountability measures. That's why the growth thing is so important. We want to grow toward proficiency, but it's got to be people understanding that when a child comes in and they have not been in a home where they've had the printed word and not been read to and things like that, those kids obviously take longer to catch kids up. And so we are working.
We want growth and proficiency.
Right. Growth toward proficiency.
Growth toward proficiency.
Yes, ma'am.
We want growth and, but we want to get there, we want to be proficient.
Absolutely.
I just have one more request, if I could. I'm just looking at the state site, and it says that for CSI support, we get a school improvement funds allocated.
Yes, all of these, all of these, all of these schools get funding.
So can you include in your report to us how much money each of these schools are receiving in additional funding? And then what they're doing with it?
Okay. I was going to say something else, and then I, I lost it. Anyway, I'm sorry, but I do know. Some of the things that.
To your microphone, ma'am.
Ms. Jones.
I keep not doing that, don't I? Just, still suffering from COVID, a lot of our schools, not just the schools I work with, but particularly the schools that I work with, had a hard time finding teachers, as you're well aware of. We have one of the schools that had 30 vacancies, not all teachers, but 30 staff vacancies for this school year. And that just makes it very difficult, so.
But they did fill them.
They were, they were filled before school started. Yes, they were. So yes, and new principal there too. So she did a good job, yeah. Any others? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Our next, our next item on the education committee is the summer learning program. And I see Mr. Seifert is coming to the mic.
Good evening. Keith Seifert, chief academic officer. I have with me a couple of other folks that are serving on the SLE team. Ron Pleasant from Division of Information Services, and then Christine Hull, executive director of Curriculum Instruction. What we want to do is provide a, a brief overview of where, where we are with summer learning. We're excited about this next year's summer of learning experience. And, and as we're, this is our third year doing this, and we feel pretty confident that we, we've got some things going in the right direction. As you'll see, we, you've seen this before. This has not changed from the previous year. The issue, I'll bring your attention to the impact of unfinished learning and also the socio-emotional piece, which is what we incorporate in our summer learning experience. We want to make sure that we address that, and I think you'll see that as we move forward. Here's our summer learning dates and times. You can see that we've, we've moved our pre-K up about a week. There's been some changes in the pre-K number of hours and days. So we are looking to finish a little bit earlier than we did the previous year, about a week earlier. So those are the dates. So you see the rationale associated with those dates. We wanted to make sure we complete before July 1. We want to make sure that teachers have the opportunity to gain that, that rest time. We also know that we have, we, we've also taken into account the, the holidays associated with that summertime. We wanted to make sure that we include Memorial Day, Juneteenth, and July 4th. Those are all a part of this schedule. You can see the times there for K-5, middle school, and high school hours. Here's our proposed sites for our secondary schools. And as you, if you look at that, there's not a whole lot of change in the rationale on how we chose those sites. High schools will run their own programs, as we've done in the previous years. But we do have some construction going on at Hardaway and Columbus High. So they will be relocated. Their programs will be at Jordan. Hardaway will go to Jordan, and Columbus High will go to Rainey McCullers. So that's, it's simply because they've got a lot of construction going on during that time, and, and we need to, we don't need to have students in those locations. And, and then you'll see the, the middle school sites and who's partnering with it, with each. Here's our elementary sites. The asterisks are associated with the pre-K centers. So hopefully, we, we don't know the number of pre-K classrooms that we will have this next year. We'll probably get that information in March, but we're looking forward to hopefully adding additional classes. But those are our, our sites and who, who's partnered with each of those sites. I'm bringing Ron up to talk about registration, doing some, some things a little bit different this year. Moving away from the OLR piece and looking more at an app. So, Ron?
What kind of piece?
App.
An app.
We're looking toward an app, and we're moving from what?
From the OLR.
Online registration. So essentially, why would we go with an app? Well, some of the things that we learned from our past experiences, as Mr. Seifert mentioned, this is our third year. Each year, we're trying to improve the process. We learn a little bit about what went well, what didn't go well. And these are some of the things that happened to us historically. Our first year, we launched with some electronic forms. It was great to gather the data, but not so great on the back end for processing the data. So it was good, but not great. And then the next year, we kind of got a little bit better with that, but we still are a little bit lacking in terms of being able to process the data. And to give you kind of an example about what I mean is, when you register for school during the school year, you are enrolled, you're scheduled, those kinds of things there. Our summer program's becoming a little bit more like a normal school year and segment, with the exception that we don't have the same attendance zones. So it complicates things a little bit. So, again, past efforts tell us the process needs to be simple and straightforward for the parents. However, we need enough detail to be able to enroll the student and schedule them in the right campus. Past couple of years, it wouldn't really have been a scheduled activity. It would have been, you know, everybody's getting the same curriculum, you're going to a classroom, et cetera. We also need to capture enough information to know if there's nutrition needs or restrictions, as well as any transportation needs. And then we actually need to, some lessons that we learned, we actually need to improve the amount of communication that's happening with the parent, such that they know their application's been entered, that they know what the status of that application is for summer learning. For faculty-staff, it's a little bit similar to that. So when we ask the faculty and staff to sign up for this, this is an additional assignment. So they really have to find a way to almost apply to this opportunity as well. Registering needs to address all the HR issues, the payroll issues, and the campus needs. So in essence, we have a summertime school administrator. They need to be able to see the staff and faculty that's available for them to assign at their campus. And again, a common theme, we need to increase the level of communication in this process as well. So campus operations, I alluded to this a little bit. During the normal school year, registration, scheduling, rostering, all of this has started with Infinite Campus. The problem with summer learning, though, is that Infinite Campus has you in an attendance zone based on your address. And we're kind of clumping together schools in different ways, so we sort of create maybe pseudo-attendance zones. If, if we needed to do this in Infinite Campus, there's really no easy way to let this happen. So we need to almost create an Infinite Campus light, if, if you will. So here's what we're talking about. This is the SLE app. When we're talking about that, what, what does it mean? If you have seen what it takes to apply to our magnet programs, the magnet app, it's going to be based on the same technology. So we're gonna ask the parent or guardian to enter just enough data for us to validate, and we'll gather the rest of that from Infinite Campus on the backend side. We're gonna ask essential questions. Do you need meals? Do you need transportation? On the transportation issue, they'll be denoted that it's only available to their zone school. And then messages about where they're at in the status will be available to them through this app, as well as getting sent some messages. They'll be able to see where their application's at. Site administrators, in essence, these are the summer school principals. They, they serve for a very short amount of time, but they need to be able to see all the students that they have coming to them. Again, complicated, because normally you can't see all the students across the district. But these students will be coming from a number of schools into this summer site. So they need to be able to see all of those students such that they can do all the scheduling work that they need. They also need to be able to see all the faculty and staff opportunities that they have. Again, they'll be matching students to faculty to make a schedule. And this will help them roster. Rastering's kind of important, because if we ask for students to be set up with additional summer access to applications, IXL is one, Achieve 3000 is another, these are all driven off of rosters. And so what happens is we leave the rosters in Infinite Campus alone, these students are locked into however the school year ended, and they can't really exist in another way. And that's kind of a nutshell of what's gonna happen with the app.
Good evening. Christine Hull, Executive Director of Pre-K through 12 Curriculum Instruction. We're gonna go through just a high-level view of the academic programming that we want to offer this summer, looking back at what we've done since previous summers, listening to our teachers, evaluating our programming, and then tweaking and making changes to enhance the academic experience at all of our sites across Pre-K through 12, well, 11th grade. So we want to focus on core instruction. And in all of our content areas at all grade levels, we will focus on skill building. We know that there is still a learning loss that needs to be addressed. We also know that there are students who need enhanced instruction, maybe need to go a little further during the summer. So we want to make sure we're addressing the full spectrum of our students on their academic achievement levels. Enrichment and acceleration. With enrichment, we're speaking more toward that core instruction that has extra connections. So when we talk about community partnerships, which we'll talk about in a little bit, we're talking about that enrichment aspect of the curriculum. And then acceleration, those students who need to speed up instruction for one of two reasons. Either they are behind and need to speed up a little during the summer so that they can catch up by the time the fall rolls around, or they're already doing really well and just may need some accelerated enhanced instruction over the summer that speaks to their interests and their proclivities. We also want to ensure, and I know Mr. Seifert spoke about this earlier, that social emotional learning is embedded in all parts of our academic instruction as well. So with our elementary ELA, we got really good feedback from our Lit Camp experience from last year. We are going to maintain that Lit Camp for our core instruction in elementary ELA. And then in six through eight, we have now brought on Savis, I-Lit, and My Perspectives. Those have been going very well this year with close monitoring. And what we're seeing with the I-Lit 45 is that skill-building piece, taking students from where they are, and we'll talk more about personalized learning, but screening them, knowing exactly where they are, exactly where those skill deficits are, and where they need to be on grade level. So we are working with them and Ron, Mr. Pleasant mentioned the rostering, so that will be very important. That app will help us with rostering those students into that programming. And then at all grade levels, of course, we have Achieve 3000, Sora, which is a wonderful resource through our library, also connected with our Chattahoochee Valley Library System, where students can, they can check out books, digital books from home, online, wherever they are, that enhances our own collections and also tags into the library collections. And then Lexia and Lexia Power Up, so those will be available to all of our students. And then at all grade levels for math, we will be utilizing IXL's summer unit plans. They do already have those plans as part of what we have with IXL, so leading our teachers through how to use IXL in the summer, which looks a little different from the way that they use it during the school year, and also how to use it with students that they may not have taught all year. Making sure we screen appropriately and we put them through those skill builders as necessary. We're also looking very diligently for something new in math. We know we have some work to do there. And so we're working at looking at several different programs that will give us the biggest bang for our buck when it comes to summer math instruction. And really getting that skill building, making sure that our students are able to connect, not just while they're in summer learning, but also when they're home with their families or when summer learning is over, what happens then and for that continual math instruction. We also have, of course, looked at Robotify, which is robotics and coding. And in some of our specialized programs or in some of our specials that are offered at every school, how can we work in the robotics and coding over the summer as well? And then in science and social studies, we have resources that already give us a wealth of information about students, screening them, getting them where they need to be on standards. So we'll be continuing to use STEM Scopes, Studies Weekly, our Canvas resources, and the Georgia Public Broadcasting resources, as well as Discovery Ed, and then our community partnerships, which we'll speak to a little bit more in a minute. We do have suggested timeframes for our schools, and we say suggested timeframes because we do know that schools are gonna need that flexibility. So you'll see there what we're suggesting for ELA and for math, those time segments and blocks. They don't have to be done consecutively, but making sure that students are focused on that academic piece. And then also for social studies and science daily, and then transition and breaks are scheduled by the administrator. We will have a piece of personalized learning. We definitely want to continue that over the summer, where students are going to have a digital learning journal. Now, this will be for grades three and up. So not Pre-K through two, because it's a digital learning journal. We feel like that needs to be, our babies are not quite ready for a digital learning journal, but they will have pieces of personalized learning in their instruction as well. And with this journal, they'll focus on why they're doing summer learning, what are their goals over the summer, and then their, their own success criteria for what those goals are, and then having them reflect on their summer learning experience, which informs them, it informs their parents and their families, and it informs us as a district as to how they experience summer learning. And last but not least, certainly not least, we want to provide some additional enrichment for our Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, and SAT ACT prep. So we have done these in the past, but we want to add some to this experience with our International Baccalaureate schools, particularly at Hardaway High School, working with Richards and Clubview, as those are also IB schools. Their portfolio work that they do with creativity and service and activity, they'll be working with those schools, both doing projects at their school and at other schools around the district. And then with Advanced Placement, we are going to design a summer, Advanced Placement Summit for our Advanced Placement students, designed by our AP teachers in conjunction with College Board, to really get them ready for that AP coursework that they're going to be entering into in the fall. And then SAT ACT prep, we will have prep classes offered at each high school with College Board and Khan Academy resources, as well as ACT resources and test ahead for those students. So that's just an overall view of the academic programming as we have it set now.
Thank you, Christine and Ron. I can say we worked extremely hard with, we have members from all the divisions associated with this, our planning group, and appreciate their work. Here's our current list of community partners. I think there's twenty-eight of them right now. There's more being added. I know Mr. Matt Bell has been working diligently with United Way and trying to identify some additional partners. But we're so appreciative of our community partners. They play a big role in what we do with summer learning. And you've seen through last year, through the pictures, and, and what, what our students experienced. And it's extremely exciting to see them be a part of this. We'll do similar to what we did last year. We'll schedule those events at the district level, send them out to schools. And then they, the schools will then schedule their, their, their academic coursework around those experiences. We want to make sure that we provide those experiences in an equitable way. We will, those will be for K-8 only. The high schools will, they'll identify their own work in, in the enrichment activities. And, and they'll gain, gain those through those AP experiences and so forth. I do want to say we, we haven't forgotten about credit recovery. We still have to do that at the high school level, so we'll continue to do that. Here's basically the, the staffing piece. And on the left side, you can see the, the staffs that will be identified for each site. We're looking at a one to eighteen ratio. We do use tech support, three days at the beginning of the, the summer learning, and three days at the end for technologies and handing out Chromebooks and also retrieving them back. So K-12, or Pre-K, we're a one to fourteen ratio. That's up from previous year. It was one to twelve. And, and those are dictated by the grant that we get. Again, we'll, we'll, we're gonna pay time and a half, just like we've done in the previous years. So we want to make sure we identify the, the necessary staffing to help support this. Transportation, school nutrition, they'll decide on theirs, as well as the special needs department, they'll decide on their support that we need at the individual school sites.
I might just mention as a site benefit, the, the site director, these are aspiring principals. So they have an opportunity to basically work as the leader of a small school environment for that period of time. So it gets them a little bit of their, letting their, putting their feet in the water a little bit. In this, like I said, in a little bit smaller environment, but they're in charge of this whole school and everything related to budget and so on. So it's a great opportunity for them to, to, to grow as leaders.
Absolutely. Here's the approximate budget. We have not hit this budget the previous two years. But we will, approximately, that's what we'll look at spending for this upcoming year.
Were you higher, Keith, you said?
No, this is, we were lower in the previous two years. Transportation and school nutrition, we will provide transportation to K-8. That's what we did last year, and it's to their zone schools. So if you're in a magnet program, it's whatever your zone school is. Now, if you, your parents can provide transportation to your magnet site, that's up to you and your parents. But we will provide transportation to our SLE program at their zone school site. The nine through twelve, we did not provide transportation last year. We will not do that again this year. So they will have to find their own transportation to those, to those sites. Pending available drivers, we will, if we have the opportunity, we can certainly transport students to the community partner sites. Or if we have field trips during the summer, we can provide it for them as well. Again, it's all dictated on the number of drivers. Free breakfast and lunch will be provided through K-8. And high school students can choose to go to their, to the feeding sites that are identified. And, and they can make their way to those, and those, those will be posted prior to summer learning beginning. Communication plan, we will be announcing this probably next week to send that out. And that'll go throughout all our social media posts, through the paper, on our website. And we'll provide that, and that'll, that'll continue over the course of the next three or four months to get ready. You can see the important dates there, that we want to start registration on March 1st, run that through May 5th. Then we still have the opportunity for school administrators, if they need to sign up, folks, we want to let them, allow them to do that. And, and that will be in conjunction with the contacting the parent and making sure they, the parents are aware of that as well. And then you can see, we start on March, May 30th. You've seen those dates before. But we've identified those important national holidays in those dates as well. And then you can see, we've, we've, we'll be doing those dates and times through social media, all our media partners, Blackboard Connect. Also, you'll, as Mr. Pleasant elaborated on, they'll get emails from the, the app, as similar to what they, they receive from the magnet app. So they know that they've signed up and they've registered. So that's important. We want to continue that communication piece. And we will, we want to make sure we, we take pictures and we get the stories associated with summer learning. Pam Allen, who is the creator of Lit Camp, a renowned literacy expert. Hopefully, we can get her down here this year. We've talked to her on Zoom, and maybe we can get her here to help support and, and provide some words of encouragement to our teachers for this. As, as always, we're gonna do program evaluation and feedback. We will have that. We do that with our STAR information assessments and identify how many students we have, credit recovery piece. We will certainly get stakeholder feedback, parents, employees, community, and student feedback. We want to make sure we get the feedback from them as well. Here's kind of a timeline that were things we need to make sure we take care of over the course of the next several months. You can see that, as well as, as we get into May, there's a lot going on in May and June. But we're excited. It's a great opportunity for our kids, and, and we want to continue to do this at a high level. And, and hopefully, this will be a great experience for our kids this next summer. And we thank you for allowing us to be able to do this, because you provide that support for us to do it.
Thank you all for all your work. And to see how the program is growing when you, when you self-evaluate and, and make improvements. And I'm really excited about the student piece, to have them journal and have staked in their learning. And hopefully, the goals will be established at the beginning so they can actually evaluate, you know, how they pursued and/or conquered those goals. Two questions. The app, are, are there gonna be links on our site that will direct them to automatically go into the?
Similar, similar to what we have with our, with our magnet app. That's right on the front page. We'll do the similar.
And the same thing in the email communication that goes out. The second one, do you know, or maybe you can add, this is a part of your reflection, what impact does it have to not have, provide transportation for high schoolers? Would they participate if they had transportation? Because I don't know what that participation like, is like. I know that those numbers are always the smallest. Would it matter?
Well.
If there, if there was transportation?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that this year and look to see, I mean, we can certainly survey the kids and the parents to see if that would have made a difference. We're just, bus drivers are an issue, and they're working hard as they can to make sure we have enough drivers to meet the needs. And, and, you know, if we get a, a number of bus drivers and they come out and work, then certainly we can look at how we can provide more transportation.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. I had an opportunity to attend the summer learning experience, I believe, the very first year we did this. And the kids were having a great time. I like the fact that it is totally different than what they're receiving during the year because it should enhance what they're doing. I do have a couple of questions because I see things like Star Reader, Lexile, things of that nature that we're already doing during the year. So I wanted to ask, out of the $7 million that we anticipate that we may spend on this program, what is being spent on resources that are different? And is most of that personnel? That's the first part of my question. The second part is, and this may not be possible because I know not all teachers will sign up, but this is just my personal opinion. Eighteen to one is still very high as far as student teacher ratio, even for a summer program, especially if I'm trying to take care of learning loss. If I'm trying to take care of learning loss, that means I individually need to pre-test and post-test students. And I need to know specifically what Lori needs and what Pat need. And they, they probably are two totally different things. And I don't, and if I have eighteen, that makes it very difficult to do. And then fourteen for pre-K, I know that's less, but to me, that seems a lot larger than it should be in order for us to really take care of the learning loss. And that may be because we don't have enough teachers. I don't know.
I'll answer the first question. The STAR assessment is purchased during the year. It's just, it's an assessment piece. So what we want to do is we're going to take the spring assessment that they do during the school year and take those results. We'll assess them at the end of the summer, summer learning. And then we'll assess them again back in, in the fall of the next year. And Patrick does an analysis to see whether there, there was some summer slide or we've actually made some gains by, by the students participating in summer learning. And it's a comparison to those students who did not attend. So we do that. So that's something, that's not a cost to, to our summer learning budget. What we do is we purchase that, that Lit Camp is different. The materials are all different than compared to what's done during the regular year. Those that, we purchased that two years ago and we still use the, those materials. And so that was a pretty significant purchase. And if there's need to add additional, we'll purchase the more materials for that Lit Camp. The other materials for math, which will be different, as we've done, we've done Bell Excel, which is an online program and also supplemented with some paper or paper pencil pamphlets and things of that nature, worksheets. That, that was supported the last two years. We're looking at it as something different because we want them to also gain some experience and keep that camp-like atmosphere, but utilize math in a different way. And we're actually looking at Pam Allen and another, Michael Flynn, who's a renowned math teacher. They have now a math camp, summer camp. We're not, we haven't made any decisions on that yet. We're just looking briefly at the materials to see if that falls in line with something that's different than what they do during the regular year. We do have to work on skill development. There's our students that during, because they missed a number of days or they just not attained what they needed to from an achievement perspective. So we have to work on skill development. So there will be times to do that during the regular, during summer learning. And we'll actually schedule some of that. The other pieces, the enrichment pieces, those are different than what we do during the regular year. And we'll continue, and those students will also have experience in the enrichment activities. So we want to make sure they get, they get that as well. When we talk about math skills and literacy skills, reading skills, we want them experiencing that and working on specific skills that, that have been identified through either their STAR or iXL or through their Lexia programs, that they can specifically target those. And as we talked about the journaling, the personalized journaling, have our kids identify that and say, you know, I really need to work on this specific skill. And be able to communicate that either to the teacher or to the parent, that that's what they're working on. Nonetheless, the second question was about. In the past and generally, you know, we have that eighteen to one ratio. That's generally for an alternative max class size for alternative ed. Not all classes will be at eighteen to one. If they go above that, we generally hire a pair pro to go in there and have an extra set of hands to support that teacher if there's any students above that. Generally, they're hovering right around fourteen, fifteen, and it's fluid. Not everybody comes every day, but you know, it's, you might have twelve one day and eighteen the next, so.
Now, I know that, I thought about something when you just brought up the journaling. You said that the little ones are not going to do the digital journaling, but they will be doing some other form of journaling, correct?
We will be working on, how can our?
We know they can do it because they do it at Reese Road.
And, and they have access, all our pre-K kids through 12th grade have access to a Chromebook. So they're, they're doing it already. So just need to work with them a little bit more on, on how we can journal with them. And, and in our personalized learning piece, that's, that's an ongoing process. And we want to make sure that that will be something that we really focus on over the course of the next couple of years.
And on our upcoming retreat, we've got a time, a proposed time set aside to kind of show you what the personalized learning really looks like. So you can really experience that, so you'll really have an idea of how that works in the classroom and in the summer learning experience.
It's going to be participatory. You're going to be involved in it, so.
Interact.
Yeah, please. We want you to come out to schools. It's, it's an opportunity that gives kids excitement about learning. It's not sitting in rows and, and listen to a teacher talk like in Charlie Brown. So it is, it is experiencing camp-like atmosphere and, and plus all the enrichment activities. We're excited about it.
And I do have a question. I appreciate and love everything the Chromebook, the internet and screen time has to offer. But with it being a camp-like experience, I do hope there's a lot of focus on manipulatives with math and hands-on experiences.
Absolutely.
Breaking away from just staring at a screen the whole time. Because I'm a, I learn by doing. So the screen, I have a lot of learning loss just by using the screen. So I do think that's one area that I want to make sure that these students are getting in the summer program is that hands-on, actual.
The students actually have a library of books that each of the students will be utilizing during their small group time or whole group time and their individual time where they can access those. I got a book right here and I'm going to, I'm going to read this book. So they have that, plus our math will have manipulatives and, and support for that as well. Yeah, we have, I can tell you, our content specialists have boxed up those. And there are many boxes sitting over there at the, at the warehouse that we're going to disperse out once we identify how many kids are out there. We'll do the same thing with math.
I have, I have three questions and from Mrs. Hall. One is real, I just don't know, what is, what is Test Ahead?
So Test Ahead is a piece where we are looking particularly at SAT, ACT improvement. And Test Ahead is the platform that personalizes that for the student. Just kind of like Khan Academy, but this is an additional piece that will allow them to be assessed formatively and then to work on those specific skills with SAT where they may need additional help.
Kind of like identifying, this is, okay, very good. Two. Keith said something about it, you know, but I was intrigued with that digital learning journal. Okay, what does that look like?
Okay, so we are in the creation stage of that digital learning journal because we're the first to do it that we have found. And so Sherri Green, Cheryl Green, who is our personalized learning specialist, she and the PL leads that are working every month, we have three training days a month for all of our PL leads. They are collaborating across the district to create that notebook and to make sure that it's age appropriate. So we are working on something for our pre-K through second grade students that is geared toward their level and their needs. There's some coloring and sketching and drawing, which really helps them. To your point, Ms. Tillery, about the manipulatives, we know that they need more of a hands-on experience. And then it is goal setting in the beginning. I know Ms. Hugley-Green mentioned that, that they will set those goals in the beginning and it gives them prompts throughout the journal. So they can set their goals. It has a data piece where the student puts in their own data where they set their goals based on where they need to work or where they would like to excel. It also has some, when we talk about personalized learning, it's about them. So it, it gives them a chance to talk about themselves. What, what do I love most about the summer? What am I looking forward to in this summer learning experience? Telling their teacher, because its teacher may not be who they're with during the year, a little bit about them. And it gives them prompts to guide them through those four weeks. So there will be weekly markers. And as soon as we have that finished, we'll be glad to send you what that looks like. And that's going to carry on into the fall as well.
Okay, we'll just wait then.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, afterwards, afterwards, when everything is over, there's a reflection piece that's also goal setting for the fall. So we want it to be a transition piece.
I was wondering, is it, how often is it done? Is it done per child? Is it done daily? Is it done weekly?
So every student will have their own personal journal. And in that personal journal, for summer learning, because it's so truncated, they need to visit that journal more than once a week. Now, that's going to look different in different environments. But when we come to the school year, it may be over longer periods of time. But for the summer, two, three times a week, spending time in that journal with, with wherever they're really concentrated. We want it to be student-driven. That's the goal, is to move them toward autonomy and move them towards some self-efficacy and owning what they're doing during the summer. And so those prompts will lead them through that. And some kids, some kids who love to journal, they'll be asking for more pages in their digital notebook. And we're going to show them how to add those in there. But some, it's, you know, going to take teaching them that strategy. So it will be paced based on the student with recommendations from us.
Did you say they would have access to it through the year?
Yes, ma'am. That's the goal, is that next year, we will roll this out across the district incrementally because we know our teachers are learning a lot, doing a lot. We want to make sure that we do it right. And so we're going to go in small chunks and small pieces for our staff because we want this to be pervasive. We want it to be every classroom, every student, every teacher. And to do that and do it well, summer learning is our chance really to kind of have fun with it and see where we need to tweak and see where it's working or we might need to adjust as we move into the fall. But we didn't want to neglect that piece because we feel like it's really important to start working on goal setting and reflection with our students.
With that journal and if that can be done with the students within, in that personal journal is very important, as we know, as you know, for students to take ownership of their own learning. And of course, that's what teachers have been trying to do. What we have been having staff developments on how, how to get students to take ownership of their own learning because they are involved in the game. You know, they can figure it out. This is what I need. Oh, this is what I'm missing. So that's good, if, if, if that, if we can be successful in that, in that piece, that's very good.
That's our goal. And we want it to be engaging to our students where they can pull in pictures of themselves, videos. They talk about, because whenever they talk about themselves, that means a lot to them and it attaches them to the learning. So it will be interactive. And that's the goal, is to make it engaging for them and to continue with that.
And my last point or question or comment, however we can determine that to be. We talked about, Mrs. Chambers said that she had visited the, the summer learning program. And so then I, I've visited and I see people having campfires, you know, and just doing all kinds of stuff. So I just want to make sure, we want our summer learning to be engaging. We want it to be fun.
Microphones.
We want it to be engaging. We want it to be fun. We want people to want to go. But I want to go back to what's, back to the skill development piece. It's very important. We're in summer learning, we're trying to make up learning loss. So that part is very, very important. As kids have fun, as they have these community partners, as they go on field trips, we want to stay focused on learning loss. And we want to make sure that we are developing some of the skills, whether we are doing it with manipulative, manipulatives, as Nikki suggested, whether we are doing it with whatever. But we still want to be focused on our learning loss. And that, that goes for assessing skills and monitoring the progress. So that's what we need. And also, another point, I'm sorry about this one. Is there, now, I don't see how, from how we are making our assessments of the learning program, I don't see how we are technically measuring whether it's successful. If we are doing the pre-test, it seems like we're doing a pre-test from spring, spring evaluations. And when is that spring evaluation?
The STAR assessment is given, I believe it starts in April, middle of April, and goes through the middle of May. And they assess them during that timeframe. It's just a, it's a ten to fifteen minute assessment.
So it's given in April? And it's given again, when is school? It's given in April and?
And then we'll give another one in, at the end of June.
And, and, okay, so that's the pre-test. Are we using this as the pre-test?
The, the spring test will be kind of the pre-test. The one in June, at the, at the end of June, will be an assessment after the program is finished.
The program isn't over, the program is over in June?
Yes.
Okay, so the pre-test will be, it's just one month. The pre-test is in May and then we get one in, okay, good. So pre-test is in May.
And then we'll take another one back in, in the fall, which is late Octo, late August, September, and compare the results.
Okay. We give one in May and then in June, that's the one I'm interested in. And the one in October, that's for, to assess the kids that didn't take the summer learning.
That's a comparison that we want to do.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any more questions?
Thank you all. Sorry for the length of time. But I do want to, again, shout out to our folks that work on the committee. Appreciate it.
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I have a question for Dr. Lewis. I think they did a great job with their presentation. Do we still have a partnership with Columbus State University, the math collaborative? And then the science, okay? That would be a good partner to come in during summer. Very good.
Okay, are we finished? Okay, our last item for the education department is the Raina McCullough School of Arts, where one board member, a board member, wanted to have a discussion on that. I don't know what board member that is, but if they would like to, okay.
I didn't realize I wasn't getting to really leave the whole thing. But so as we know, we had a student come and talk to us in December asking about being able to participate in sports at his home zone school. I believe in the beginning of January, you know, we were told that it would be discussed in the retreat. I'm sorry, every now and then I'm a little slow on the uptake. But when the parents asked about it again, a little light bulb went off. And I said, you know, if we don't talk about it until the retreat, that means the earliest we can take action on it is in March. March, and that is going to preclude the student from yet another season of possibly being able to play the sport. So I do realize that we don't always, aren't always able to act quickly, but in reaching out, I emailed the parents and said, you know, kind of give me a timeline on how long y'all have worked on this. And they told me that they tried this last year. So this has been a very much ongoing process for this student. They asked last year, we're told that this was not an option at all. Nobody kind of told them who made that decision, just that it was not an option. Then, and this is again my understanding of emails, but they came back this fall and found out that even though they couldn't do home zone schools, somehow some sports had been added, that Rainey McCullers now does offer cross-country tennis and swimming. So I think that, but that, you know, they could do those three sports but couldn't do the sport that their child played. So from that, they came and spoke to us in December, as we noted, kind of asked, I think, after they didn't see it on the agenda in January. And so I just asked because I don't know why it would take us that long to have to talk about it at the retreat. In my opinion, we could get some information on it tonight, and I don't know why we couldn't vote and discuss it some more next Tuesday night so that this student might have the chance. He's a junior, so if he doesn't have a chance this year, and that's fine, if the board decides that we're not going to do it, at least he knows that. What I would really hate to happen is for him to find out in March that the board was now going to allow it and he only has the opportunity to do it for his senior year. Again, I know I've heard before, we can't just do things for one student, but most, a lot of changes that we do are sparked by one student and one set of parents that come to us to discuss an issue or a problem they have that then ends up benefiting all students. And so I would just like to open it up to see if we might could fast-track it a little bit, because it really does concern me that the parents weren't really made aware until very recently that the board could change that policy. I mean, they were kind of left to believe they really had no option.
Well...
Is my understanding.
Right, and so the reason why I wanted it for the retreat is so that every single board member will have an opportunity to hear as much information as possible, and not just the board members who are speaking to the parents. And the more information that we have, I think the better the decision that we can make for us to consider making any changes, if any at all, if it's totally at the board's discretion. And I was the board member who said that we don't, I don't want to do anything for any one student. And what I meant by that is for us to take any action that would allow students to participate in sports at another school at this second part of the school year does not benefit the students who would have wanted to play a sport in an earlier season. And that's, that's what I'm talking about. The work that we do has to be for all of the students. And more importantly, I want, as board members individually, I want you to have as much information and ask as many questions as you want and to give the administration an opportunity to provide that information, and that is better served to us at a retreat because, see, now we're going to have a bunch of questions and they may or may not be prepared to answer, and we would be voting based on how we currently feel about the question that is brought before us versus gaining some information that may change how you feel about it. Now, what I understand and what I believe may not, you all may not support it, but I do think that, that we can support students in areas of multiple talents. I do not believe that Rainey McCullers would have to change anything that it does in order for us to do that. And what has already been done by the Board of Education in previous years when we've had early college, we've already done this before. However, I think it, I think it deserves a conversation and as much information as possible so that all board members will have the same information all at once, and that would better, be better served. And I did speak with the parents about two or three weeks ago to make sure that they understood, I would ask for the administration to be prepared to bring this information on the 25th, but for us to, I don't do knee-jerk, knee-jerk reactions and decisions, in my experience, has always opened itself up for some unintended consequences. And I just think that having a thorough discussion and an opportunity for all board members to receive this information was better, being better served at the retreat. And, you know, it's the will of the board, I don't know what you all want to do with this discussion item tonight, but all the lights are on, so how about if I start all the way down?
Okay. I just thought about this.
I'll start with you. This is still on the education committee.
I just thought about it with my committee.
Yeah, okay.
I will be, I'll save mine for the end then, because I will be...
You want to wait till the end?
Yeah, because, do we have any information? I'm just, since we're having this discussion, do we have any information tonight?
I do.
Oh, we do have, we are prepared to have discussion with information?
What I've been asked to provide.
Okay, well, I think we should go for...
I think we should spend a bunch of time on this, we did on summer school.
Okay, all right, so that's what I'm saying, if we, now, my whole thing was that, I thought we didn't have any information because the point is for the discussion, and when you have a discussion, you got to have information, like Ms. Green said.
That's what work sessions are for.
And he said, Dr. Lewis said, we have information, so I think we should move forward.
That's cool.
Let's move forward with the discussion then.
Yes.
Who would like to speak first on this? Nikki, your mic?
Well, if he has information, I'd rather him provide the information.
Yeah, let's get the information. Dr. Lewis?
Permission to proceed, Madam Chair? Well, again, Rainey McCullers was envisioned long before I ever was on, here as the superintendent. I was tasked with that and I'll go through that in just a moment, but I didn't want to, I think it's important to hear historically how we got to this point. I think that's always important to look at the history and to hear from that. And I do know we have with us, I thank you so much for your indulgence of time this evening, Dr. Billy Kendall, who is the Special Assistant to the Superintendent tasked with developing and researching the school and planning for it. So I'm going to ask him to speak, then I have Michael Kater, who's providing what information we're able to gather at Ms. Hughley-Green's request regarding some other schools in the state that are similar to that, and then I have a closing statement just to kind of wrap it up, and then we'll go from there. That's okay with everyone?
Good evening, Dr. Lewis, members of the board, and my good friend Karen Jones, who I've worked with for 30 years, it's a pleasure to be back in this room.
It's good to see you, Billy.
And now, Mrs. Green knows me well, and she mentioned earlier she didn't want this item to be, to hijack the agenda, but now I heard Mrs. Williams say that I could hijack it, so anyway, I promise to keep it, to keep it short. But I did want to point out that currently I'm President of the Rainey McCullers Foundation, and I do want to point out two members, Robbie Holt and Janet Kemp, and also point out that our purpose and focus in the foundation is strictly to bring support to the Rainey McCullers School of the Arts, primarily in financial support. So any of the three of us would be glad to talk to any of you after the meeting about some financial support, we'd appreciate it. But I wanted to point that out because I am, I am here not representing the foundation because, again, we're not a governance committee or we're just to gain support for the school. I'm here representing the planning committee that developed the plans for Rainey McCullers School of the Arts about 20 years ago, and Dr. Lewis asked me to bring in information. And I am not here to present my opinion, I'm not going to give you my opinion, I'm just going to talk to the focus of the committee at that time and our thinking at the time the school was planned. So understand, I'm not going to be presenting my opinion. Now, the document I am going to use this evening, now, I've been accused of never throwing anything away. Well, it came in, it came in handy this evening because this is the document I used 20 years ago, and you'll see it says, "Proposed MCSD School of the Arts," before the school even existed. It was, we brought the concept and a proposal to the school board for approval. Now, Mrs. Buckner, Mr. Cantrell, let's see, Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Green, I promise I'm not going to give you the same presentation you heard 20 years ago. I'm going to just go through just the highlights that pertain to this evening. So the whole concept, just to give you a real brief history and give you an overview, and then I'll get to the meat of what I want to present, but the Chamber of Commerce each year sponsors a visit to another, to a city within the United States, and civic leaders go on that retreat and that visit. And so civic leaders visited Kansas City, Missouri, and they visited a school of the arts in Kansas City, came back and really said, "We need a school of the fine arts, performing arts in Columbus, make it happen." Dr. Phillips was the superintendent at the time, and I was his chief assistant, and so he comes to me and says, "Guess what? This is your challenge." And so here's what my assignment was, I was to identify and create a community committee. I was to utilize that committee to visit, study, discuss variety of schools of fine arts, develop a school model and a mission for a school of the fine arts, and share those findings and the model with school board members and the public. So we started out, I identified 75 civic leaders in town, educators primarily, leadership positions, principals, and then art teachers in the various arts, and then civic leaders, and looked for those who had some kind of experience and appreciation of the arts. So we met monthly for about a year and a half and really just discussed the need for a school and discussed a mission and a vision. Now, before I share that with you, then, after we, as a committee, adopted our mission and our vision statements, I narrowed the committee down to 10 members, and they were primarily executive directors of the arts organizations in town. And then we visited schools and did more of the specific planning of the school. But anyway, getting to the first committee and what we looked at in terms of developing a mission, if I can get to that page, I will share it with you. Here we go. Well, so the committee of 75, a year and a half, our mission statement we developed at that time was Muskogee County School District's School of Fine Arts in collaboration with the community is dedicated to the development of the talent, creative potential of young artists in an integrated academic environment. And we envisioned a school where each student would be given extensive opportunities, develop his or her talents, create a potential through arts educations, and that would be offered in an introductory and immediate and advanced levels. Arts education would be integrated component of education and an avenue through which the student's mental, emotional, physical, social skills would be enhanced. Students would develop a deeper understanding and appreciation of the fine arts. We envisioned that students would have an additional opportunities to interact with guest artists. The faculty would be qualified and fine arts professionals, and it would be a collaboration with the community to simplify that. And so our next step is we visited schools throughout the southeast, schools of fine arts. And let me just mention the schools that we visited. We visited the Alabama School of the Fine Arts in Birmingham, which by the way is a residential program. Students come from all over the state to attend that school. We visited Lavilla School of the Arts, which was a middle school program in Jacksonville, and the Douglas Anderson School of the Arts in Jacksonville, which was for high school students. We visited the John S. Davidson Fine Arts Magnet School that was in Augusta, and the Fine Arts Center in Greenville, South Carolina, which was a half-day program, and I'll come back to that in a second. We also visited the South Carolina Governor's School of the Arts and Humanities, also in Greenville. The first one is the Greenville School System, this is part of the governor's program. It, again, is a residential program. And I also personally, the committee did not visit the Savannah School of the Arts, but I later visited it. And I did want to mention that now, those were visited by the small committee of 10 individuals who were tasked with the specifics in the planning of the school. Now, we also had guest speakers come in to visit with that first group of 75 people, someone from the Cab School of the Arts and the Cobb County School of the Arts, which is really within Pebblebrook. And it was a, it's a performing arts school, it's a school within a school in Cobb County. So the next thing we did, and I'm getting now to the meat of what I wanted to, or needed to bring to your attention. So then we had to decide, or one of the first things we had to decide is, first of all, were we going to be a school of fine arts or were we going to be a school of performing arts? Okay? The difference, the school of performing arts, that's literally the performing arts, you know, your music, your dance, your theater. Fine arts would also bring in visual arts and creative writing and film. And so we decided that we wanted a school of fine arts and not just performing arts. Then we had to look at what kind of delivery model were we going to recommend? Was it going to be a half-day program? The students receive a half-day academic instruction in their home school and then receive a half-day arts instruction at the school for the arts? And we did visit such a program, and that was in Greenville. Again, what happens is the high school students would come to the school in the morning, and then they went to their assigned schools in the afternoon for everything else and academics. And then in the afternoon, the middle school students would come in. And so as we looked at the half-day program, the disadvantages of that were, it took more transportation considerations, there was lost instructional time going from one school to the other, reduced collaboration and integration of the arts in the academic program, increased scheduling conflicts, student involvement in home school may be limited to full participation in the arts program. And I'm going to come back in just a second and share with you what the principal told us in that model. All right, a school within a school model, this, again, the students would attend a fine arts magnet which would be housed in a traditional school. All the students that were going to the fine arts program would also be assigned to one of our high schools, so it was really literally a school within a school. All right, the disadvantages that this committee came up with at that time was participation in athletic programs and other extracurricular activities may limit full participation in the arts program. A potential for negative school climate may be created between the students and the arts programs and the students who are not in the program and are there based on their assigned school. Limited options in providing appropriate arts facility in an existing school, limited options in providing appropriate middle school programs within what would be considered traditional high school. And then, and then increased expenditures and resources. So we decided to go with a dedicated school model, which is what Rainey McCullers is, a school devoted to the development of the talent and creative potential of young artists in an integrated academic environment. And we saw those advantages as being increased collaboration and integration of the arts and academic programs, has the components to meet the community committee's mission statement. There's... statement, there's potential for providing options for students who desire a non-traditional high school program, provide a better collaboration between the middle and high school settings, potential for increased arts concentration, potential for providing appropriate, efficient staffing facilities and programming needs, and potential for increased student arts participation. Now, I did want to go back, interesting enough, it fits in to some of the discussion, was the gentleman at the Greenville School, which by the way, over the winter break in December, they had moved into a new facility, and we went about this time of year. So we were there, I mean, they were still unloading boxes in this beautiful facility. And again, he has a half-day program. The students are assigned across the county and various schools to their assigned school. And as I said, the high school students come in the morning, middle school students in the afternoon. And he just said, and let me say, this gentleman at the time was also president of the National School of the Arts Professional Organization. So he was, you know, quite active throughout the entire country. And he said to us, "I really would encourage you, if you can avoid it, not to do this model, this joint model and half-day program." He said, "I had no choice, this is what I was given." He said, "But I'm going to share with you the issues, you know, there's not really a sense of loyalty with many of the students within the School of the Arts. You know, they weren't able to collaborate, the academics and the arts professionals, and there was, you know, not the integration." But he said, "The biggest issue were those students who are involved in organized sports in their assigned schools, your football, your basketball, your softball, baseball, cheerleading." He said it was a, many times a battle between the schools and his programs, and students being able to participate in both areas. And he said, "Quite often, it literally became a nightmare." And he said, "I just would encourage you not to do that." And so at the time, that was the committee, we, in every visit, we asked, "Is sports, athletics, you know, what are y'all providing?" And of course, a holistic approach, I mean, children need, and students need to be up and active. And so they were providing, and we heard time and time again, independent kinds of sports, we've already heard swimming, tennis, cross-country, aerobics, fitness in a fitness center, movement, those kinds of things. They did not provide athletics, and so we made the decision that we would not either. At no time did we ever hear that students were being allowed to return to a school to participate in sports, other than this half-day program I'm talking about. You know, and of course, I'm talking many years ago, but I, you know, there were students, I've got a good friend, and I'm going back to the 1980s, who was a star athlete in high school, who was also very talented, and he received his drama training and his music training in his assigned school, and was a star athlete at that school, and went on to play for the University of Georgia, and did quite well at the University of Georgia. After graduation, he later appeared in the leading role in Les Mis on Broadway, and did many other Broadway productions and touring companies. And so that was someone who was, participated in the sports in his school, and received the arts training. And so at that time, I'm going to bring this up, so at that time, we discussed that, and we felt that the Rainey McCullers should be for those students who, whose whole life and involvement, and their whole being was about developing that talent. And if those students that wanted that traditional high school experience, whatever that may be, sports, cheerleading, other kinds of things, that they would choose, they would choose to go either to the traditional school, or they would choose to go to Rainey McCullers. And we also knew at that time, as we discussed, you know, we all know sports and know the time and the efforts that's involved in sports, and participating as a member of whatever team it is. But I want to point out, the arts is the same way. I mean, a theatrical, music, dance program just doesn't happen overnight. It takes the same kinds of, we don't call them practice, we call them rehearsals. And it's, so it takes those same amount of time and effort for those students. So, the bottom line, we felt as if students who wanted that traditional high school experience would choose their assigned school, and students who were dedicated and wanted to enhance and develop their talents, they would choose Rainey McCullers. So that's from the perspective of the committee, and I know it's y'all's decision, but anyway. Any questions?
Again, that's all, I guess somebody else is going to tell us a little more current, because that's all.
Yeah, I was given a historic perspective, yes ma'am.
Billy, I know you mentioned in your presentation that you had not heard of anyone sort of attending their zone school for sports before now.
Oh, okay, let me state the-
Except for the, what was it called, the half-day-
Yeah, the half-day program, right.
But my question is, and you may not know this, and Dr. Lewis or our athletic director may know this, has the Georgia High School Association recently changed their ruling on that, saying that kids can attend a different school for sports if a sports program is not offered at their school?
So, I can speak to that, and maybe Jeff Paddles can, but there's no prohibition from that being, it's up to the district's decision as to what they choose to do. They don't get into the programming, they just simply govern the overall sports and that kind of thing from the various schools, but they don't dictate to districts about what you have to offer, or how, what model, or anything like that. Is there anything, Jeff, that you would add to that? As he's coming up here, I do want to clarify one thing. The first that I heard about this request or appeal was when they came to the meeting back, what was it, December, whenever that was, yeah. It was never presented to me prior to that, and I only say that because I want to make sure that as far as a year long, I was unaware of anything related to that. Mr. Paddles?
The GHSA bylaw says that the local Board of Education can make that decision for a magnet school, but there are some regulations underneath it that the student has to follow, such as they can't participate in a GHSA event at two different schools. They have to pick one or the other, and that decision goes throughout the whole year, things like that. So there are some regulations that follow if you do decide to go that way, but they, it is a local Board of Education decision.
Thank you, Ms. Paddles. All right, Mr. Kendall, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just didn't know if there was any more information.
Yes, I've got some more coming.
Okay, yeah, I'll wait.
Dr. Kendall-
Yeah, so Ms. McCray, yeah, I was just giving y'all a historical perspective when we were planning the school. So, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kendall, I appreciate again your time and the historical background and perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Kendall.
So, Ms. Green had asked me to have staff pull together what schools within Georgia, now this is just within Georgia, that are similar to what we have here, not all the different configurations, but what schools that are like ours here. So, Mr. Kater, would you mind please sharing what you have? And I'm sorry, we're pulling this together faster than we originally anticipated, because it was going to be the 25th, but here's what he has found thus far.
I'm going to ask, before he starts, you asked him, what was the directive again?
To pull, at Ms. Green's request, was to pull together information regarding the fine arts schools that are like ours, standalone dedicated art schools, whether or not they offer sports, and if so, what sports.
Okay, so, what was, why shouldn't he have pulled also together schools that have this sports program? Are there any schools-
You'll hear, they're-
The reason I'm saying that is because we're trying to make a decision, you know-
That's what that is.
Oh, no, but he said that the directive was just to pull schools-
To pull the school of the arts that are standalone school of the arts versus any other model, because that's what the comparison is too.
That have sports.
But only in the state of Georgia, at the request of Ms. Green.
That's good, the state of Georgia, I mean, I can add that information, but I just want to make sure that, that he was, the directive was to look at the performing for the fine arts school in Georgia, not just ones that don't allow sports, but in general-
No, no.
Okay, that's fine.
Just, schools, for clarification, I want to make sure everybody gets this.
Yeah.
What I asked Mr. Kater to do is to contact and research, in Georgia, those schools that, like Rainey McCullers, are dedicated fine arts schools, not like the one that Dr. Kendall mentioned before, that was part-time or part, exactly. Or a school within a school, because this is not what this is. This is only a dedicated art school.
Which means that his directive was to find a dedicated fine arts school, and as a, that definition, does that, does that definition mean to find dedicated art schools that only allow, that disallow sports?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, after a extensive Google search that I started, I found four schools. To confirm that those four schools was an accurate count, I reached out to one of my colleagues, Jessica Booth, who is the Fine Arts Director with Godot. She provided some other schools, but after further researching those, those schools were schools within schools. So I made the decision to eliminate that, so we can compare apples to apples. The schools are Davidson Fine Arts Magnet School, Richmond County, Augusta, Martha Ellen Stillwell School of the Arts in Clayton County, DeKalb School of the Arts, and finally Savannah Arts Academy. And I reached out to all of the, I reached out to administration recently, and spoke with current, either principals or assistant principals, to answer a few questions. The first question was obviously, "What sports are offered?" The second question was, "Are there any conflicts or issues after school between arts and athletics?" And then, the school model, Dr. Lewis has already described that, these are all standalone fine arts schools. And for the first school, Davidson, in Augusta, they offer track, volleyball, golf, and swimming.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do you also know whether or not they can go play sports at another school?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So again, for Davidson in Augusta, they offer track, volleyball, golf, and swimming. I asked about conflicts, and the principal said, "If there are athletic meets or sporting events, there will be conflicts with fine arts events. We definitely see tension between athletics and the arts." For the second school in Clayton County, Martha Ellen Stillwell School of the Arts, they do not offer any sports at their school. Students can participate at their home school, wherever they are zoned. The principal said, "They, the reason this was decided is they want their students to concentrate on the arts." And they also added that very few students choose to participate in sports at their home school. For the DeKalb School of the Arts, they too do not offer any sports at their school, and students can participate at their home school, wherever they are zoned. Similar to the school in Clayton County, they want their students to concentrate on the arts. And then finally, for Savannah Arts Academy, they offer a few more. They offer volleyball, flag football, soccer, cross-country, tennis, track, and they don't offer swimming at the school, but it is students that want to participate. I believe they have a district swimming team. And regarding conflicts and interests, and issues between arts and athletics, the principal said, "There are a few, but nothing major. We are careful about not offering large team sports, such as football, baseball, basketball, or softball, since most of the conflicts or issues between the athletics and the arts arise from these larger teams. Our team sports are actually individuals competing as a team." The principal wondered what it would be like if students participated in the arts at their home schools. The principal is definitely concerned about the push to offer more large sports, team sports, in the future at their school. When asked if the school would still offer athletics if they could start over again, the principal would probably not offer flag football, soccer, or volleyball, since these are larger team sports that defer from the other sports they offer, which, as I mentioned previously, are the individuals competing as a team. Although the schools, although Savannah Arts Academy works hard to schedule all events, there are still conflicts that arise between athletics and the arts. And then finally, I would like to add, when you compare, two of the schools, Davidson and Savannah Arts, do offer limited sports, the other two do not offer sports and allow their students to participate at their home schools. None of these, none of these schools offer limited sports and then allow students to participate in sports that are not offered at that school. They don't allow them to participate in that sport at their home school.
They do not allow it.
They do not.
Does Savannah allow, does their school district allow the students at that art school to participate at their home school in sports?
To my, to my knowledge, no.
At Savannah, they do not. At Chatham, they do not?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay.
So if I may just, this is a difficult situation, only because I was given a directive when I came here about developing a school, and why it was developed, and how we promoted the school, and so on. So I do want to write recap from my perspective, so I can share this information. And I want to start off by saying, I don't think anybody up here is against any kids. I think it's about making sure that the focus and the commitment and the integrity of the programs we outlined from the beginning was one of the concerns going forward. So I just want to, I won't repeat as much as, but I do want to share with you what I did share with Mr. Rice when he asked for a response on this issue. The recommendations that Mr., that Dr. Kendall shared included separate school dedicated specifically for the arts, as well as the arts programming to be implemented in the grade six or twelve grade configuration. These recommendations also specified that interscholastic teams, such as baseball, football, basketball, et cetera, not be part of this school's programming due to the inherent conflicts that would inevitably arise between after-school, evening, and weekend arts-related activities of a mature art school, and it's important to remember, mature, it takes at least about ten years for an art school to truly mature, to where they're having after-school rehearsals, independent, individual music lessons, dance lessons, things of that nature, and so on. Those conflicts and athletic practices and contests of eight other district high schools that all offer arts programming as well. It's important to note that all of our high schools do offer arts programming, so it's not like students are being denied the opportunity for arts. That's a commitment that this board has made clear to me, and I think has been passionate about over the years. The vision, programming, grade configuration, and other tenants of the school were shared with the public throughout the process from its inception. When I was hired as superintendent and with a background in the arts, I was directed by the Board of Education at that time to proceed with designing the school according to the prior recommendations of the study committee. The school was ultimately constructed using 2010 and 2015 Educational Special Local Option Sales Tax, ESPOS funds, that were advertised and dedicated for this purpose. Since its opening, the school has held orientation events for students and parents to share the school's vision, programming, and expectations as outlined above. The school has added four interscholastic sports, such as cross-country, golf, tennis, and swimming and diving, that are more individually based and coached by members of their staff, and are therefore not dependent upon the schedules of multiple coaches of team sports from- and are therefore not dependent upon the schedules of multiple coaches of team sports from the eight other high schools. Again, the vision from its inception and that of the Board of Education that approved it was that Rainey McCullers School of the Arts would be a dedicated art school with its own unique programming and culture. This is how the school was promoted to the public in the garnering support for the ESPLS and how is, how it has been promoted since its construction. Our district is an avid supporter of both athletics and the arts. This isn't an either-or. But given the initial vision for this school and the inevitable scheduling conflicts that will arise, students must choose currently to attend either the Rainey McCullers School of the Arts for what it offers or to attend a comprehensive high school that offers the arts and interscholastic sports that are available at their zoned high school. Now, I mentioned my background in the arts, and I always say this because I do want, it's important for me to advise you. Um, whatever, whatever decisions are made, that's fine. I feel like I owe it to you to, to advise you from my experience. I supervise the fine arts program in my former district with eighteen high schools. We had a school within a school concept where just that one school of arts reported and, and worked within that one particular school because of the known conflicts that were going to happen with multiple team sports. And here's a good example of what has and will happen. And I just wanna make sure everyone's fully apprised of this because there's no way around it. And it's not any, about any one student, against any one student, but we have to be realistic in what's going to occur. Case example, there will come a time, if a student plays a sport, doesn't matter which one, baseball, basketball, soccer, volleyball, doesn't matter. There will come a time, if that team is good enough, they're gonna be in the state playoffs. Those games are not set by the district, those are assigned by the state, in this case, the GHSA. It will occur on this date, at this time, no debate. That's when it's gonna occur. In Florida, we had the Florida High School Athletic Association, which served the same function. What I want to avoid is making sure we don't put students in the middle, because I've seen how painful that is. And here's a good example. In Florida, in baseball, they had a situation where this occurred. FHSA, the team made the, the, uh, state finals. Opening play, opening night of the play in which the third baseman was the lead for the play.
Was the what, sir?
Was the lead in the play.
Okay, okay.
Then we had a problem, because all of a sudden, the kid wanted to honor his commitment to the baseball team, but of course, the baseball coach wanted him there at that game. Understandably so, it's a state playoff game. And yet, here were all the students where he was the lead of the play, and it was all, tickets had been printed, programs were printed, and the schedule came out two days before the musical, or before the, uh, state playoff game, and they were supposed to be in Orlando to play a state game. That kid and their parents came to my office crying, what are we to do? I called both principals, I called the coach in the arts, and nobody wanted to give. My event is the most important. We've got a whole cast of them, we've been rehearsing this play for four months, getting this ready. We've got tickets printed, we don't have anybody else to do this lead. The understudy just happened to be ill, so there was no way they could be there.
Should've been an understudy.
Of course, the baseball coach has the same thing. Now, that was just one situation, there were multiple others. My concern is this, having children put in the middle between the adults and their peers, whether it's the arts, or the baseball team, or the basketball team, or the whatever. And I want to keep in mind that when we start talking about high schools, you're talking about football, potential of cheerleading, if they're competitive cheer, to basketball, to soccer, baseball, softball. It just goes on and on. The conflicts and the potential for those conflicts is limitless. Now, it may only be one or two students now, but we don't know that. It might be five or six students. Any, at any rate, it becomes very problematic. And I just feel like I have to advise you that based on the history that was done and the research that was done, that's why the school was developed the way it was. I don't wanna put a coach in a situation where they don't have one of their players they need. I don't wanna put the arts people in not having their, their star students for their play, especially if they're there for the arts. So, my concern is about putting students in the middle, and there's just no way around that when you have the inevitable conflicts that will arise. Um, and that is exactly why we have had this pro- uh, policy, or I shouldn't say policy, this is why we've had these guidelines in place since the school opened, quite frankly. And whatever the board decides, that's fine, we'll have to work within it. I just know that refereeing that is not something I desire to do, because it's, it's pretty painful to watch that occur. And have to be Solomon and pick, you're gonna go here or here, and then the fallout that comes from that. And I think most people can see the inevitable conflicts that can arise from that. And as long as we're all aware of that, and aware of all the different situations that can arise that. And I will tell you, this is not just in one or two situations. It does occur in any place where you have a school that shares students with others in multiple district, or multiple school districts. Um, multiple, like if you have eight, nine, ten, and that kind of thing. It's hard enough, even when it happens within a school, within a school, trying to coordinate within the same school, much less when you're having different leadership at different schools and so on. That's my biggest concern. And I just feel like I have to advise you and, and make, make you aware of these concerns upfront, so we can make an informed decision. But it is difficult, but that's why the school, based on what we heard here, was built and I was carrying out the mission that I was assigned when I came here.
Are there any, uh, questions or comments?
I was part of the twenty-year saga with Dr. Kendall. And just to make sure I wasn't remembering it wrong, thank you for bringing that historic context and giving me further validation that I'm not going insane. I called a couple of those community leaders and said, don't, do you remember when we went through this year and a half with the big committee talking about athletics? And they said, yeah, we all decided that was not what we wanted at this school. And I was part of the, the inner-city visits that went to Kansas City and to Greenville. And I remember talking to those students and administrators and the teachers that said, it's different here. It's special here. And one of the things that made it special was the lack of these large-team sports. That there was this focus, that there was just this unbelievable focus on why they were there. And to that, I wanna read from the Rainey McCullers School of Arts Admission Paper. Admission to Rainey McCullers School of the Art is granted on a competitive basis. With this in mind, it is the shared goal of the Admission Committee to grant admission to prospective students based on several factors that will help make a well-informed decision. While the bulk of admissions decision is based on artistic merit, the baseline cumulative average of a GPA is seventy-five percent. Consideration is also given to the applicant's attendance records, behavior records, and teacher recommendation. Please know that if admitted to and enrolled in Rainey McCullers School of the Arts, which is competitive, students will not be permitted to participate in extracurricular activities or athletic programs at their zone school or any other school. Students may only participate in extracurricular activities or athletic programs at Rainey McCullers School of the Arts. Now, I say that because I don't want anybody to believe that this student wasn't aware that these were the rules. And I agree with Dr. Lewis in that we spent hours on the road talking to people about raising funds in two thousand and three, two thousand and nine, two thousand and fifteen, all those SPOSSs that went through iterations of funding Rainey McCullers. And I specifically remember listening to Dr. Lewis and listening to Dr. Phillips and saying myself, this will be a special school dedicated to the arts, and there will not be any large-team organized sports. There will not be any football, there will not be any basketball. I think that trying to open the door for one student, although laudable, and I'm, you know, I appreciate it, is the wrong thing to do for the entire school. I've read a number of reviews placed by students who are in and have graduated from Rainey McCullers who speak to the culture of that school cultivated on both anecdotal and empirical evidence, that this is not what they wanted, and they were all very thankful for not having it there. So I support leaving it as we spent years researching it, discussing it, and selling it to the public based on these tenants.
I was, um, I think back in two thousand and two and two thousand and three, when the discussion was going on, I think I was the only present board member that was on the school board. In that discussion, there was no focus. The major focus was not that it be, um, a school that did not have athletics. Now, as I speak here, I'm not speaking because, one way or the other, whatever the board, the board decides, uh, they can decide, but that was not the focus of the discussion at that time. During that time also, it, it progressed from Dr. Phillips to Dr. Andrews. Dr. Andrews is the, the superintendent where we actually voted to have the, um, uh, fine art school. And the discussion at that time was mostly focused on, because we had to get the public into this school. Uh, there was a lot of, um, negative opinions. People came to public forums strictly to attack this performing art school, because they, there was the discussion that it was gonna be based on affluent people. Uh, disadvantaged kids could not have an opportunity to get, to get in. Uh, then there was a, a focus on, well, we're gonna have an opportunity for everybody. But that was the major focus, that we have a school where, uh, people were, uh, who were not academically, uh, focused or who had a different vision for themselves. We were trying to keep everybody in school, we were trying to provide opportunity for all kinds of students. That was the major focus of this school. The ordinary person, the ordinary voter who was about to vote on a SPOSS. The ordinary, uh, person did not know a discussion about athletics. They were basing their performance on providing opportunity for students and to make sure that we had something in the school system for other kinds of students who were not, uh, necessarily academically involved, but who would stay in school if they had something in school that they liked. So, also, I would, would say that, uh, things progress in times and they become different. Now, as far as I'm concerned, I kinda like the idea of a dedicated art school, but it's not, um, I don't think, uh, I, I think it should be decided on all the board members and also what's happening at the school. We, I hear, I'm late coming into this discussion, I'm hearing about one student. What about the other students? What about the principal? What about, what has been going on? I don't know what's been going on. You know, I don't know what is how we come here tonight. We're having this discussion about, um, about this, uh, school that, you know, and we seems that we have, we having it tonight, we gotta have it tonight, it's important to have tonight. But I'm just saying, what's the principal saying? What are the other students saying at the school?
Right.
What, um, how are other people doing this, you know, um?
What are other principals think?
Yeah, what?
They gotta share.
Yeah, what, what are they saying? You know, that's what I'm saying, because we come tonight with this.
That's a part of having balanced discussion, balanced information, rather, so that we can have a legit, a thorough discussion. That, that's the whole part of that. And to, uh, you know, just, y'all just tell us, tell, let's give this opportunity some.
Are we ready to have this discussion? Do we know anything about the school, what they're saying?
We don't, we haven't, we would not.
Y'all came with one student.
We don't have a chance, um, to talk about that tonight. Um, all of that was being prepared for the twenty-fifth. Um, Dr. Lewis is now being asked to come back and do it now. So, this is the information that he, that he has right now.
So when we come back, will we have?
Well, what I presented tonight was what was gonna be on the twenty-fifth. If we want more in-depth, it's gonna take time. If you wanna serve a current student, but keep in mind that we were talking about students right now.
On the twenty-fifth, you would also have to have the principal, so that I wouldn't have to speak as a, as a former parent at that school, um, as well as, you know.
Other principals who will be sharing.
Other principals who, yeah. So I think that's a part of having balanced information, and I don't, if, can you get that by next week?
Well, I can probably. Oh, oh, they definitely have their opinion.
Yeah, they have an opinion, but we want balanced information.
So what about the students that don't?
Well, you, we try to get all of it, Kathy. Those that don't and those that, I mean, it's not, that's, that's what we hear. We don't wanna just hear one, we wanna hear as much of the whole story as.
I think it's easy to get the, the principal's opinions and so like that. I think trying to pull together a survey of students in a week and that kind of thing to try, and, and we're talking about.
Why are we rushing so much for a week? I mean, this is something that never happens.
Well, because, well, because there was a concern about time sensitivity with this one student.
The season, the baseball season.
The student that was told he couldn't last year is now, you know, if this decision does not get made this month, he will not get to play this season.
Oh, okay, that's.
And what's the, what's the sport?
You seem like a lot of rush.
The sport is, is baseball.
The sport is baseball.
The sport is baseball, and, you know, my concern is.
When does baseball start? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
My understanding is next month.
It's in the spring.
But my, my only thing is, if there was a sport that was prior to March, that other students would have liked to participate, what about, you know, I just think that we're going to have some, some other additional issues, um, rushing, um, like this. But I, you know, Ms. Buckman, you still have some questions on the end, Ms. Tilleri.
No, no, you're fine.
And then Ms. Chambers.
Um, speaking to the school, is it full? Is, is Rainey full? I mean, it's a competitive, and, you know, I was just wondering if, if.
It's increased enrollment every year, it's not full yet. It, uh, not intended to be until about year ten. Like I said, for full maturity, it takes about ten years for an art school, that's on average.
And I love all the research and time. I know that was amazing and wonderful, and it was twenty years ago. And flipping to the sports perspective, twenty years ago, kids participated in every sport possible. And then they got hyper-focused on one sport. They played it all year, nothing else. They did nothing else except that one sport. The burnout rate was tremendous. They've started realizing now that the ability to see other areas and focus on other things in little tidbits, not a hundred percent going in, actually increased their love for the original sport. And that is what concerns me, is that burnout will occur. When you're thirteen years old and you have to make a full-time commitment, they're thirteen. Most of them haven't even hit puberty yet. And they are having to sign this waiver, make this commitment. And so to me, I fear that saying you can't participate in a team sport is gonna promote burnout and it's, it's gonna kinda, not for all the students, it may be five percent of the students that are there. But to increase the love of arts, sometimes it is nice to be able to participate in other activities that use a different side of your brain and a different, you know, teamwork is.
Well, I mean, let me just clarify one thing. At middle school.
They're not committed.
That, that's not a commitment in the high school. And I, and that's another question, I guess. Are we thinking we're gonna offer sports at the middle level too?
No, I'm just saying for Rainey, I mean.
Okay, 'cause middle school, okay.
You brought up middle school, he's trying to answer.
Well, thirteen and fourteen is what I was saying. I mean, my daughter was.
But if a kid goes to Rainey McCullers, no harm, no foul, it's not, not for them, they can go to the regular school, just like any kid at the high school. I mean, you're not signing your life away for four years. You can exit the school at any time if it doesn't fit your needs or whatever. And I, I wanna clarify something else too, it was said, it was kinda mischaracterized that I made the comment about being a tribal mentality. What I was saying about that and what was shared with the parents, and I wanna get away from being about one child or one student or one family, I'm trying. But I did say this, and I wanna make sure that this is heard, because I was, I've, I've said this story a couple times, and I've had multiple parents come up to me about this, and I hope they have you, if not, maybe they will after this. But I had multiple parents come up to me and say, thank you all for building the school. And what I said was, one particular mother came from behind the deli where she was working and thanked me for the school, and made the comment, for the first time, my child has found her tribe. That was in her mentality, my child, my child has found her people, was she, was she was saying. I shared that, and I'm sorry that got mischaracterized, uh, in an article about being a tribe mentality. That was not meant that way, but that's where the reference came from. But there are children who are looking for that kind of a culture, that kind of creative atmosphere. And I'm not saying it can't be in other schools. I'm just simply saying that was one of the focus points.
That was the way it was sold. When we were campaigning, it was sold, just what he was saying. They're looking for their tribe, they're different.
And again, I just came to develop the school that I was assigned, and I thought, quite frankly, I'm really proud of that school, and I think we all are. But I don't have a personal. But I don't have a personal investment in that to the point, it can't be changed. I am just telling you that it was important to have a historical perspective, where it came from, why it came that way, where we are now with other schools, and what they have learned. Because that's important too, to ask them, when you talk to a principal, now, they don't necessarily want to go on record in other districts, but if they, I've talked to several others in the Arts Network, there is a National Arts Network, and someone will say, listen, I don't want to go out on record, but don't do this. I listened to that because there's a reason, they're practitioners, they're experiencing it. That's why I think it's important, because children will come and go through the school, whatever they do. But it's important to hear the principals of all the regular schools, as well as the arts school, because they're going to contend with this too, making that decision, making that, playing that role of Solomon. Because I have no intention of doing that. I want to be real clear to everybody. I have no intention of refereeing who's going to play baseball versus the concert, the whatever. I did that in my former district, and we ended up in legal mediation for three days with two principals over this very issue. So, I say that from the standpoint, I just want to be clear, whatever decided, my days of officiating that, I would like to think.
I personally think that we should wait until the retreat as, as, as we had planned to get more information. But I do also want to say, Dr. Lewis, you told of the scenario where a child had to make a decision between a art event and a sporting event. But for very, very athletic children, we've had situations like that, that came up with basketball and football. We have football ending down, basketball starting, and these very, very athletic kids have to make a decision whether to go to the basketball when they're still in the playoffs and the, in the football. And then the basketball, somebody's, they want to make sure they are very, very good in basketball too, and they want to advance in so many games. So, they, now, they got to make a decision about the football and the basketball. So, you want to be in, people will be in decisions or making decisions which one to go to. But that's, at that particular time, it's just, it's a decision that they would have to make at that time. And I don't really think it will be that many, you know, but like I said, when our, you know, on, on the twenty-third, we'll, we have more time to look at it, you know, and maybe by then, we can make a more informed decision at that time.
I, no, no, there's no voting on the retreat. I, I, I can't, it doesn't identify how to turn on the mic.
If it's that important to us, we can have a call board.
Well, let me just say that, that one of the differences is that some of those performances are going to be for a grade at Rainey McCullers.
So, I have my mic on, Madam Chair, just FYI. Okay, so I just wanted to offer something for us to consider. I do agree with something that Ms. Buckner and Ms. Green said about being able to look at the entire picture. I do think, Dr. Lewis, that we need some information on how this will affect the regular school and Rainey McCullers. Either that's calling the coaches or calling the principals so that we get a clear picture on what happens if we have ten students that have to leave and go to a sporting event. So, I do want that information. I do also want us to have an open mind about the fact that twenty years ago, the atmosphere was just different. Now, we do have entertainers that play sports, they act, they own, they have perfume or, you know, businesses and things of that nature. And I think that not every child can handle that. Because, see, my questions are, again, going back to more information, is there a requirement on how many practices they can miss before they can no longer participate in the program at Rainey McCullers?
It's not a matter of the number, program is grades, it's, it's actual projects that, that they're, that's graded. So, the students will have to, the parents will be making a choice.
So, that's information that I don't have. Those are the questions that we would need answered.
To that point, and I didn't want to speak as a parent, that's why it's important to have, you know, the, the principal to come and talk about, you know, the information that they've gathered and why some, how, you know, how we're down this road. But I think that it's important, and we have some, some data that's even more recent than twenty years ago when we had the early college, okay? Those, instead of one parent coming, it was the students who came before the board and said, hey, we want an opportunity to play sports. The board did allow those students to, to play sports at other schools. And it took care of itself, because guess what? You got to get to practice on time. We couldn't provide that transportation because they're going to different places. So, they weren't getting to practice on time, right? And some of those early, those, those activities that they had to do for their dual enrollment didn't allow them to participate in the sporting activity. So, it really kind of took care of the, of itself. They made a choice, they were at early college, they were focused on the programming at early college, and so they for, they, they just let the sports go, except for those who were those ultra-athletic, multi-talented kids. They walked right next door to Jordan and played for Jordan instead of trying to go to their home school. And so, it really just kind of took care of themselves. The board did vote on, and I can't exactly recall the year because I don't have the email. Ms. Jones, who is our glue, was able to find where we actually made that in recent times. And we could do that here, but the difference is, Rainey McCullers School of the Arts performances are for grades. It's not, they're just not honing their, it's not extracurricular activity, is what I'm trying to say. It's not an extracurricular activity, it's, it's school.
So, that is why I'm saying, I'm trying to see exactly the information that we need. Because I also hate to have a kid who is passionate and can handle doing sports and arts. I would hate to stifle that. So, I think that it's up to us to have an open mind, to get the information, find out what, what problems is it going to cause, if any? But then, what are the benefits from the kids if they're able to participate in the passion that they love in the arts, but also the passion that they love in sports?
Okay, so do, does this board think it can do that this week?
I'd like to make one more comment, please, before we go to that.
If we can get the information, I would be ready to make a decision, but I would like all the information before making a decision.
I agree with Ms. Chambers. But I also don't want anybody in this community to lose fa, lose, lose sight of the fact that every one of our high schools has outstanding arts programs and outstanding traditional athletics. Look at any one of our high school. Some of them are lifted up on a state level for their choir, and they're also competing for the state championship in baseball. I mean, we have that opportunity for every single one of our students. The students at Rainey McCullers are there because it's different, because it's not traditional school. But I agree with Ms. Chambers. If, if, if we're going to do this in the next week, I'm going to want to hear from also the other students. And because, I mean, right here, let me read you just this. We have so much, this is from students, we have so much focus on both arts and academics. And while it's definitely not your normal high school experience, no sports or homecoming culture, et cetera, it's an experience, I can say, I feel I was meant to, it was meant to be my middle and high school. And then another one, the students are also extremely talented. We each have one major, mine being choir, but we fit into many different majors. We don't have just one talent, but multiple. There isn't a thing I would change about Rainey McCullers. I mean, so we have to hear both voices.
Now, I think you probably can get fifty statements like that. Those kids love that school, you know, I'm just saying, that what they're doing is just testifying to what they love. But I really don't think, if you open up this school, those schools, those children do feel like that. They do feel dedicated to their talent, mo, most of them do. But I'm just saying, but what I also feel is that they won't make it an athletic, I mean, a lot of them, when they're those artsy people, a lot of times, when they get to those coaches, those coaches, first of all, the first time they get there and they're late, a coach will not put up, that's the only person in the school, in the, they kind of have their own thing. You can't be, you can't be late for your coach. They put you out, and if, and if you're not pretty good, you can't play, so they're going to want to go back anyway. I'm just saying what is true about athletics. So, you can't stay there anyway, you, they, if you're not pretty good. The coaches, you're going to be bitched the whole time, and you're going to probably go back to your school. They don't, and you can't be late. They, I mean, when I was, my daughter was athletic, you know, I was always tied between or not going from one sport to the next. One of them told me, they got to be here at this time, the other one said, they got to be at, so I was always torn. So, these coaches, when these kids, even if we allow this, I don't really think it's going to last that long. Because when they try to go to a coach late to practice, you know, and I know we probably going to have some parents coming in saying, how can they put us, but I'm just saying.
Well, we wouldn't be deciding on that anyway, because the athletic programs will continue, Rainey McCullers programming will continue. The people who will be making the decision are the students and their parents, because they're not going to be able to be in two places. So, Dr. Lewis, you are itching and burning to say something, but I don't know that we can have, that, that Dr. Lewis can have this information by Tuesday.
And if everybody feels now, I won't waste, I know how people are. There's no need to waste his time if, if people going to vote to, I'm, I'm just saying. If, if he's going to have to go somewhere and get a whole lot of information, do all these surveys, everybody already got it on their mind, what they going to do, I'm just saying.
Don't waste his time, okay.
Don't waste all that time, you know, because there's a lot of stuff to do.
If we want to know what the adults think as far as the coaches and the principals, I can probably pull some of that together as far as that and what they expect in terms of practices and games and that kind of thing, I don't know.
Mr. Battle's right there.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to put him in the spot, he and I need to talk about this and see what we can pull together.
He knows what the coaches expect. Yeah, I know what the coaches expect.
I'm going to, I'm not going to commit to that, I'm going to make every effort, I cannot commit to that.
Yeah, that's like a drop what you doing right now and get this information, so let's be realistic. Hit your, hit your microphone.
I don't understand why we're rushing to this, trying to make this decision. And it is to accommodate one student, it is, you might not want to say, but it is for one student, because we don't have, you know, ten students or twenty students or a hundred students standing in front of us. So, we are trying to change the culture of, of, of a school that we were very deliberative about setting up for one student. And you can't say, well, they'll fail, that's not the way you govern, is based on potential failure.
Ms. Tillery.
We waited a retreat.
Ms. Tillery.
I just have, going back to one of your comments, so the, I know, I understand like a performance is a grade, but are you saying after-school practice is also a grade or just a performance? Because that's a whole different ballgame, if you have to stay after school.
Well, I'm just saying, whether you're in the arts or whether you're in a team sport, it's all a team sport.
Yeah, she said it was a grade.
Well, yeah, well, yes.
I think that some of it is a part of the grade, because you're going to have to stay after school to do it, so.
Yeah.
So, it's, you stay, it's required to stay after school and practice?
It's part of your grade as far as all.
I'm not, I, I, I have not taught one day in my life, but I do understand, because I did have two children there, that those performances are linked. They can't practice, it's a comprehensive high school, they got ELA in math and science also during the day. And so, it, that part of the performances that are, that are linked to a grade or project that's graded or whatever it is, those, all of that is prescribed out. Parents are aware of what those evening, you know, after-school times are going to be that are in support of this graded activity.
So, their day is actually longer then, because they, it's required.
Depending on what.
I just can't, I can't believe you could be like mandated for a grade to have to stay after school.
If they're doing, if they're getting ready for production.
But you're doing it in regular school, if you got a senior project or any other kind of, you're just, you're just at home doing it. Still, you still got to put that time in and get that work done.
Everything's fine until it's not.
I know, and I, I just feel like we're spending a lot of time talking about what should be the parent and the child's decision that parents and children can do. If my child is the star baseball player, I'm not going to let him try out for the Spring Musical because I'm going to know that he's devoted to baseball. And trust me, this is not the case with my son. But, you know, parents do this all the time. I mean, you know, we don't do basketball and baseball because we know there might be some overlap. I mean, as Nikki said earlier, sadly, it is to where most children do have to kind of focus in on one or two sports and make those decisions. But yes, my child that was doing moot court at Columbus High ran cross-country because cross-country was in the fall, moot court was in the spring. I mean, we do this all the time, and I think it takes away from our students and their parents that we can't seem to think they can make these decisions. I do think at Rainey McCullers, there's a requirement, if you don't meet those requirements, you don't get to stay there. So, if your sport that you go do somewhere else takes you out of that school too much, then you forfeit your chance to be there. It's really, to me, not that difficult. And I think that I, I get the mentality of, you know, it's an arts school, and that's why I think it's a little odd to actually have sports there, that that does make it more kind of in everybody's face. It can kind of take away, we've got six people on the cross-country team, I feel left out because I'm not on it. Whereas if they go back to their home school, play their sport, they're doing that there, offers them other opportunities to experience these things with other students in other places and helps really, the ultimate goal to me of education anyway, is a broad, well-rounded child, and it allows for that. So, that's my two cents. And it's not really going to change on how much more information anybody gives me.
I think, I think, I think that, I think that we want, you don't want to send that message either, because those seats are limited and competitive, that if you really not interested in the arts, sort of kind of you take that space up, and then when your team goes to the championship, ah, we just forfeit and, and we just move out of school. That someone who was really wanting, who were competing for that seat, who didn't get in, I mean, it's just so much, it's just too many. And I, we're not going to solve it tonight, and it doesn't sound like we're going to be prepared. What's the will of the board to do this Tuesday? Are we going to be prepared to do this Tuesday? Okay, Mark.
You know, the School of the Arts is almost what, an eight, ten-year project that has been focused through what, four splotch of, it's going to be arts, it's going to be arts through this. So, you know, if we change it, to me, it looks like we're giving to the voters out there that, you know, we've done this now for four splotch, we want your money, and we need to build this for, for something special here in Columbus. And it's not that football and all the rest, all that's special, but this has been pounded in about the Rainey McCullers School of the Arts the whole time. And for us to think that we can make a, a change in the next five days without really digging deep into this, because you're talking about, you know, there's so many different things that she got going on that, you know, to me, to come and say, well, let's, today's Monday, okay, next Monday, let's make a decision on this thing, okay? But it only took ten years to come up with the other decision. And so, I think we need to, it don't matter if we had five kids, we need to make sure we do our due diligence right on this thing here, because we're changing a whole format of the school. And, and if we don't look at this as professionals, we need to, you know, take a step back, because this ain't a quick decision. And five days is not a quick time. We need to, you know, to me, I was thinking, well, maybe we could get this thing worked out for next year, to start next year and, and have a full focus on it, have parents come to us to be able to give their benefits. And also, to administration, but that's, that's what I'm, I'm looking at, it's too fast for us to make this big of a decision. Let's put it off till later, I'm thinking next year, that way, we've got a full format to be able to look at this thing from, from the top to the bottom. And that's just mine, I, I don't want to vote next week, I tell you truth, I think it's too much stuff. This thing is just laid on my table tonight, I mean, all this thing here, y'all in the same boat that I am. Okay, how much can you put information, what are we going to do tonight for next week? You know, I understand the kids wanting to play sports, but also understand the School of the Arts right there. Right now, I think we need to make sure the School of the Arts is, has been, has it been extremely rewarding? The School of the Arts as far as the grades and all with the kids? I mean, just top-notch. And so, why do we jump in there to make a change if something is, is going well? Now, we might make a change, but things do change, you know, we just, changes is part of life. What we did a year ago might not be the same. But we also don't want to rush in saying, well, we did this in four days, let's, let's put it off some, and let's all have a good board at the retreat, and let's all talk. Let's, let's put it off some and let's all have a good board at the retreat and let's all talk about this. That way when we feel confident that this is what we need to do and hear from the public. I guarantee you, if I've only heard this bit, the public ain't heard nothing about it. And the public is the people that we are not trying to please, but to, to make sure they know what's going on in our community.
It's been on the TV and in the paper.
I know, and I've seen it, but I still haven't seen as much. And do you think thirty thousand or all the people out there have seen all this? You know, we haven't had a discussion, we have not had a discussion on this at one time on this school board. This is the first time that we got, it might have been in, it might have been in newspaper, I'm not the newspaper.
Well, we've had emails too. Have you reached out to the parents?
Have I reached out to y'all though? This is the ones that I'm reaching out, the ones that making this decision. I'm not worried about all the rest of them. I do like to hear feedback from people because that's what our job is, to hear what people say. But, but I know one thing, I want to hear a lot more about the future of it, what can happen to it. And, um, I know you're trying to guess it the way I understand this young man is wanting to start next week playing baseball. Maybe some things are just too fast. No matter what you want, you can't have it. And I sort of feel like that's what this is. It's, we can't start his baseball season next week because it's too fast for us to come up to a great, a perfect antidote what we're doing here. So that's, that's just the way I'm looking at it. I don't want to do it next week. I think we're all pushing it and, um, I don't think you need to push such a major decision.
So at this point consensus, Ms. Buckner, are you?
Not for next week.
No.
Not for next week.
Ms. Tilery. You, you want your information, but Dr. Lewis does not believe he's gonna have all, all of this ask, um, for next week.
If I could have information, I would be ready. I think, I think as board members.
Hit your arm.
Although personally, I would hate to keep a kid.
Hit your arm.
Personally.
I would hate to, to keep a kid from his passion or her passion. But at the same time, if we only listen to one side of the story, no matter whose story that is, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice.
And the rest.
Which is why I'm saying I'm ready to vote if we can get the information next week. But I think that we owe it to our professionals, our teachers, our coaches to hear what, is this gonna cause a problem in your classroom? Is this gonna cause a problem, you know, that we can't see, an unforeseen problem? And so that's why I asked for additional information. Um, I did not know they were being graded on performances, that's one thing I did not know.
Yeah, that's their school.
Yeah.
That's their class.
And so definitely the academics would be first for me. But I believe that if a child can handle the academics, if they can handle the arts and handle the sports, I wouldn't have a problem with them, you know, playing sports.
And also, uh, Margot Sly is on the phone. She's away at training for a new board member, not, new board member training, I forgot about that. Um, Margot, did you want to weigh in? I hear you've cued your mic, your phone back up.
I did, I, I, you know, I just, I, I'm also of the opinion that I would just like a little more information, um, before voting on it really. I mean, it is something that unfortunately, I guess, this parent has been trying to, um, sort of get through with from last year, but maybe wasn't, um, you know, wasn't able to get heard the right way that she needed to be heard at that time. So it's all sort of, um, a little bit fast. But I think if we have a little bit more information, we could all sort of go from there and, and make a better decision about this.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, if I could, just two things, I want you to think about what information you all want, so I can be sure to have what that is. But I would like Mr. Battles, he has a little bit of information about baseball since it's come up around the topic and I hate it's about this one sport or this one situation. But since it has come up, I, I, he can probably shed some light on where we are in respect to baseball season and tryouts and games and all that stuff, which I think has already started, but, oh.
Yes, sir.
Uh, GHSA Baseball started the second week of January. They are now in their second week of games. Some of our teams have already played three or four games already. So for even, even if you voted Tuesday in this past, the chance that, um, a stu, a player would be added to a team right now is, is a long shot. Just because they are, they are in the middle of their season at this time. For the majority of our JV teams, they finish at spring break. So they only have about six weeks left and our varsity goes until the end of April. But we have started already. I didn't, I didn't want the board to think baseball started next week, that it has started already and games have been played.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Battles, I appreciate it. So as far as what I'm, what I've heard thus far, just for information, that we're going to contact the coaches about what their expectations are about practices, that kind of thing, Mr. Battles, you taking this down so we can all make sure we can get this together? Okay, and talking to our, um, arts teachers and the principals of the schools, is that what I'm hearing from everybody?
Yeah. I have one question, just logistically, I can't remember who brought it up. But is it possible, if we were to decide to allow some of these big team sports? Because we couldn't say we can only do it for this one student, for this one sport, you know? So if we were to allow these big team sports to take our students to their home schools, can, are we allowed to mandate that the priority would be for anything required of the Rainey McCullers School? You know, could we say if in the event there is a, there is a conflict that Rainey McCullers always has the highest priority?
I think that should be.
If you don't like it, you can leave.
I think that should be a part of.
I don't know if we can, that's a good question, I think it's a good question.
You're the board, we can do whatever five of you want to do.
Simply because that is an academic performing, uh, School of the Arts. It's a, it's a comprehensive academic school of the arts. It's like Julia, I mean, they're earning grades. Yes, just like you would if you were at a STEM school and your science or your STEM project, it's all a part of the program. Or robotics, whatever that magnet is, you are, when, when you do these projects in these magnet programs, it's graded, right?
Can we just make sure we would be allowed to do that?
Uh, I can check on it, but I'm pretty certain that the board can designate that it's a.
I don't even think we should do that. I think that person right there has made, I know you fix it. But a person has made a decision. If they don't want to, um, to me, they, they've opted out of the school. You know, you've opted out, if you can't, that's a great, if, if you're giving grades on performances and you decide not to, you are opting out yourself. You are opting out of the school by not, not doing the performance.
Okay, maybe just make it that sort of language clear. You know, that's all I'm saying. We're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
The parents and the students still should be able to make that final decision.
They will definitely be making a decision. Yeah, they gonna make that decision.
And I just want to know how many grades are actually after school activity? You know, I, I would be interested to know what percentage, because like at Columbus High, they have to do work after school, but they don't have a test at 5:00 PM.
She's not having a test. I thought she said with a performance. I thought she was saying that. I thought she said the performance is great, a performance is great. Now, they have to, they have to practice after school, she said. Now, they do have to practice just like athletes practice after school.
Right.
Rehearsal, rehearsal.
Rehearsal, I call it, it's just a term, it's a term, yeah. But, uh, yeah.
So I, getting back, I'm getting information from coaches and principals, right? That's what I'm getting.
I think if, if we are given any information from students or parents as a result of this meeting, which we may get feedback, because I know, I did look at about thirty comments on a Facebook page. For, I think it was the Rainey McCullers Facebook page, actually. And it was, it was pretty fifty-fifty. Half the parents were like, no way, and half the parents were like, why can't you let one student do it? So I think we need, if there's any of that feedback that can be shared with the board members as well, given to, you know, if you get any and just call it so that we don't all have to do it.
Well, out of occupational preservation, I don't do social media, but I'll have communications people doing that for us.
That's the same thing with me. I don't do social media, I didn't even see the new, you know.
So, so where are we?
I'm getting information, I know that.
A retreat, we're talking about the retreat.
Retreat. We should have, hopefully, we should have this information by the retreat. It gives you two weeks.
I'll let you know as soon as I get it, how about that?
Does it say that the schedule is?
Is impacted.
Exactly.
Yeah. All right, so we're gonna thank you all so very much for everything.
And I would like, this education committee is, uh, closing. This is a historical moment for this committee with all this time, all three items. So I would, I gladly turn it over to the chair.
Thank you so much. All right, policy committee, Ms. Tilery.
Um, four point, oh, four point I one, um, is the Board Annual Review of Ethics. The Muskogee County School Board has been recognized as an exemplary board by the Georgia School Boards Association. The Board will seek to reapply for exemplary board status for 2023. Um, this exemplary board clas, classification requires that all board members abide by their local code of, code of ethics policy and a review of the code of ethics policy is required annually at the Board of Education meeting. So I'm just presenting, yep, the board, the code of ethics is attached.
Review it, you do need to open up your attachment and review it. And let me just.
We're not voting today, we're doing that now.
Do you, we, we're supposed to do this out loud, um.
Oh, do we read them?
Just the domains. Yeah, you're not voting at all, we have to review it publicly. Um, and let me just say this, please do not wait until Tuesday and send me those self-evaluations, that is not fair.
I sent mine.
I appreciate you.
I sent mine too.
Mine's done.
Thank you all so very much.
I will remain at this.
I'll send mine.
Yeah, I have promised to review this.
Y'all want me to read it or are we gonna review it independently?
You could, you could carry, would you just do the domains, the title, domain titles? So we can be in compliance and I would appreciate that, thank you.
Domain one, the governance structure. Domain two, strategic planning. Domain three, board and community relations. Domain four, policy development. Domain five, board meetings. Domain six, personnel. Domain seven, finance, financial governance and conduct as a board member. It's also on there, conflict of interest. Policy reference disclaimer, anything else?
And so all of those areas are, are, is enacted in state, um, statute of how, of how school boards and it, and for the record, it only pertains to school boards. Um, and not every other elected office, which, including the ones who made that decision, don't have a code of, code of ethics or required to take, um, continuing education on, on ethics. And so all of those domains are required that we are prescribed for how we are to conduct ourselves um, as professionals and as board members and as elected officials. So thank you so very much. And next week, we will be reviewing our self-assessment as well as the self-assessment for our community group. That's also a part of the exemplary application. Yes, ma'am.
Have we already come up with that list?
I'm gonna, I, it appears that I have to do it.
Okay, I'm going to send you a name. I have someone who would love to serve.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Tilery.
Okay, um, four point O two, Audit Committee Members. Um, in accordance with the Charter for the Audit Committee of the Muskogee County School Board, the chairman recommends the following board members and external members to serve on the Audit Committee for 2023. Audit Committee Members, um, two O two, Ms. Laurie McCray, Chair, Board Vice Chair. Ms. Kathy Williams, Board Member District Seven. Ms. Kia Chambers at Large. External Members, Mr. Andy Cottle, Director, Director of Audit Sanova's Financial Corporation and Dr. Fonda Carter, Accounting Professor, Columbus State University. And then Ms. Pat Hughley Green, Ex-officio. So, um, this will be voted on next, is it thirty days or next week? Next week, yep. Y'all have any questions? That is it for the Policy Committee.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tilery. Ms. Sly, you have, uh, Discipline Committee.
Yes, Madam Chair, there are no items submitted for the Discipline Committee.
All right, no items at this time, thank you so very much, Ms. Sly. Uh, Property Committee, Ms. Chambers.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Moving on to the Property Committee, six point zero one is the Appointment of Library Board Members. Um, the resumes are attached for Donovan Granville and Tisha Johnson. Any questions, Board Members? The, um, Library Board has already voted on these members and they have approved these members. They are just now asking us to, um, approve them as well. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll move on to six point zero two. Six point zero two is the Library Report and, and just because of time, I, I won't read that to you. And six point, any questions? We have a wonderful library. Six point zero three is the Museum Report and, um, I won't read that either. Um, six point zero four is the Surplus Property. We have several, yes, we have a wonderful museum. Sorry, guys. Six point zero four is the Surplus Property. Um, we are, um, going to put several buses, um, that have almost two hundred thousand miles, um, up for surplus. There is one that's only thirty-nine thousand miles. Is there a reason why we're, that surplus?
Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Oh, okay, so at two hundred, we reset it and went another forty thousand miles, okay. All right, so. Yes, please, misleading. Six point zero four, that concludes the surplus, um, property. Any questions? Hearing none, that concludes the, um, Property Committee and I'll turn it over to you, Vice Chair.
There you go. I don't think we're gonna have, and just if they have any questions. Okay, we have, we have two items on our committee. The first one is, uh, Employee Tuition Assistance Program. That's a program that we have to assist our stu, our, uh, employees in their time of need for, uh, when, when there is, um, um, I don't know exactly, uh, when they have, uh, well, some, uh, when they need assistance and some kind of financial assistance with some kind of problems that they have. I don't know how to say that better. Uh, second thing is Personnel Report and, uh, we're glad that, we're glad to know that, uh, as we requested on last month, that there is an attachment, uh, explaining all of the vacancies. And as of now, I'm gonna just go and give this, we are so happy that she sent this to us in the, uh, she sent this one time and then she sent it in, in a revised version. But, uh, the two questions that I always ask is transportation with the buses. We have, uh, vacancies, one sped bus, twenty-seven regular bus, buses and twenty sub buses. For teachers, we have, uh, sixteen, uh, sped vacancies, twenty-three sped Paris, thirty-four point one general ed and, um, thirty, twenty-three, uh, uh, general ed Paris. Any questions?
Uh, just one real quick update, we had a board member request, just an update about our, uh, working with our after-school programs and I think we've made some progress there, we're still in, in progress, but making progress.
Thank you. So there are some challenges that we've all, we all aware of with our transportation. We started this school year out with some goals that we wanted to make sure our transportation department was meeting. We currently are not meeting those goals across the board, but I want to share with you what those five goals were. On-time arrival to school, which is very important, timely arrival home, as well as routes less than seventy-five minutes long each way and no pickup time before 6:00 AM and all students home by 5:30 PM. So those are our five goals that we set out to start the school year. We are not meeting that across the board, but we are much better than we were last year. We are really proud of the work that our bus drivers have been able to do, the overtime that they're pulling and we really appreciate that. However, it does mean we are still not supporting all of our, better, all right. It does mean we are still not supporting all of our after-school activities. We are supporting after-school activities if it helps us meet one of those five goals. So in areas that are more sparsely populated, it does help us to support the after-school activity because it may mean that we are transporting a student to an after-school program, which is closer to the school than their home address. So it helps us. But those areas that are more densely populated. But those areas that are more densely populated, it is not necessarily helpful for us to support those after-school activities, because we still have to take the rest of the students home at that bus stop. So if that bus stop has 30 students, but only five of them attend an after-school program, that means that we've now added one more stop, and it does not help us meet our goal. However, we have started supporting several activities throughout the district. We are supporting a program at MLK for Boys and Girls Club. We are supporting several programs with the YMCA and other programs throughout the district. As we continue to hire more bus drivers and get them trained, we will support more programs as it works towards our advantage to meeting those five goals.
I do, we have, I had asked a question about this, and you had shared with the, an opportunity that you offered some of these after-school programs, if they would send us their previous drivers or people at their facility to, to be trained as bus drivers. How is that going, anybody signing up? Because if they can call and say why we're not supporting and transporting, surely they can figure out how to assist us with people that were driving their vans to come and get this free training.
Absolutely, so one of the things that we offered, which is a really unique initiative, is that we offered any after-school program in need of our transportation support to provide us with staff members that we would pay to train to get a CDL. We would pay them while they're driving our buses to pick up their students, and they'll be able to drive our buses using our gas and our vehicles. All on our expense, because it helps us in our driver shortage. To date, we have had no organizations or staff members to get trained to drive their students.
But wait, they were only going to have to transport their students, they weren't going to have to do others?
Absolutely. We would give them a route just to transport their students using our buses, and we would pay their staff members while they were transporting their students, and we would pay them to get trained.
So I was glad to hear that, because as I shared with one CEO that bu, a bus shortage is not our issue, we have plenty of buses. We need people to drive them.
Absolutely.
Dr. Anderson, would you go over the list that we are helping again? Which organizations are we providing transportation for?
We are currently providing, and this is a brand-new addition.
Brand new.
Boys and Girls Club at MLK only. We're providing Boys and Girls Club for their Gears Program throughout the district. We are providing support to the Salvation Army and YMCA at several campuses, as well as Park and Rec Center and Excel.
Great, thank you. Yes.
It's coming.
Ms. Buckner, I thank you for saving us time, but I do want to make sure that I provide, that I am looking for a vote of a decision on what we need to do with this Tuition Assistance Program. We need to revise it, and the presentation that's in your packet in the board docs, I can send it separately, provide a summary, whatever you need. But we do need to make a decision, because there takes 45 to 60 days to put the new program in place.
Oh, I didn't even read that, I just.
Tuition, program, assistance program that we approved before.
That's exactly why I was coming to you, is it, so the, the Tuition Assistance Program was originally set up or requested. The concept was for a tuition reimbursement program with a limit of $100,000 budget, which means that up to $3,000 for anyone who's applying for it, for a course, would be authorized, you know, based on eligibility and certain criteria. Unfortunately, once the research started to be done to identify a vendor, we discovered a gap. The gap is that tuition, true tuition reimbursement programs don't have a limit. If you have a budget, it needs to be implemented in a different fashion. We tried with the first vendor Scholarship America, and they weren't able to work it out. So since they couldn't meet the commitment, we went to someone else, the International Student, let's see, International Scholarship Tuition Services. And that company also couldn't do it for the exact same reason, but they offered an alternative approach, would be, which would be a scholarship program. And if we agree to a scholarship application format process once a year, that, that $100,000 limit would be able to be monitored, people would be able to apply. But what would need to happen is now that we would be looking at implementing it, then we would have to revise the timeframe in which the courses that people would sign for. It would be for degreed programs and diploma-based programs, like a GED, but nothing more than that, because the limit of the $100,000 does restrict us.
So this is about changing the vendor?
It's changing the vendor, changing the format, and, and revising the timeline.
Okay.
And that's all in there for the three. So I'll, I'll resend this separately to you with a summary in the email, and, and explain what I'm looking for.
And reattach it to the, to the agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that I.
That's okay, it, it is in the agenda.
It's in here, and I, and I did read it, but when I glanced at it, we're, we're, Ms. Chambers, we're considering a, a financial assistance, and so I thought that was referencing that.
Right.
But now, also, there was also a statement in there about Paris. Paris is not part of this program, because you indicated that the, the state of Georgia, the governor has them in some other kind of program.
Yes, so we can, it'll go farther, is all that means, is that we don't have to work, look at Paris participating in this program, because they have almost the exact same thing
Okay.
through the state.
I saw that.
Plus, we have a grant internally where we can add additional training for Paris. So they're taken care of, it's.
Yeah, that's what I, I saw, I wondered if that was a change, but I did see that, I'm sorry that I interrupted.
That's okay. I, I just want to make sure that you are aware, and I want to save time, but I do, I, we definitely need to have this decision made.
We got to vote on it, it's action. Anybody have any questions about that, or we'll ask questions next, next week? But you, you have given us a nice summary, so we'll look at it again, and we, if we, we'll look at it again. You've given us a good summary, and we'll, we'll look at it, and then we'll vote on it next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. That concludes Personnel, is the screen?
Thank you, Ms. Buckner, Mr. Cantrell, Construction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on, Construction Committee, 8.01, amended budget for the HVAC Columbus and Hardaway Schools. During the December 12th, '22 Board Meeting, the Board approved a $12 million project budget for the Columbus Hardaway High Schools HVAC projects. The projects include a GMP not to exceed $11,201,000, engineering fee at $684,000, and contingency at $115,000. The new total is $2.7 million more. It'd be $14,759,953 SRF funds in the 2020 East Sploß. Any questions, ladies? If not, we move on to the next one. Change Order Number Six, New Elementary School, number eight, 8.02. Construction on the new ES number eight started in summer '22. The approved budget included significant contingency to address potential unknowns with site work. Change Order Number Six does not increase the overall board approval budget of $37,890,000. The funding source is the approved construction owner's contingency for this project. The change order, which includes general conditions, additional site work, will come at a cost not to exceed $2.1 million. So they sort of look like they're wiping themselves out on the money there. Any questions, ladies? Moving down to the next one, 8.03, Project Delivery Method, Secure Vestibule. I do not know what the word vestibule was, so I might as well let you know it's, I can't answer that one there, but maybe y'all can. The School District Construction Department requests the secure vestibule project to be delivered with the construction manager, CM, at risk model. The model will allow the architect and the construction company to work closely together during the beginning stages and design a better set of perimeters around the school, around the budget for the defined scope. The project delivery method of construction manager has been used on many projects throughout the district, which requires budget restraints that align with the recommended scope alternatives. I don't see no change of money there. So that's always good. Normally, they're always higher. If no questions, moving to 8.04, Project Delivery Method, Kendrick Hardaway Additions. In the January 17th, '23 Board Meeting, the Board approved initial project budget not to exceed $8 million for the Hardaway and Kendrick addition projects. The project is to address, among other things, the front entrances of the school. The architects will determine the exact scope of work, which is likely to include additions to the front of the schools. Any questions on that, folks? If not, we move to 8.05, Construction Status Report. We just skim over them, unless you have a question right there. The first one is Arnold Middle School Modernization. Total cost is $20,785,000. Columbus High School Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning, the total project is $6 million. You see, a lot of projects are still going on in our school system. Columbus High School Interior and Exterior Upgrades, Columbus High School. This project is $1,911,080, which it had an adjustment of $406,120 that, that lowered it from the $2,317,000. So that's good there. The next project, Four Classroom Additions and Renovations for Matthews Elementary School. $1,767,148 is the approved budget on it. Internal renovations are substantially complete. The rough plumbing and foundation work is complete. The exterior walls to the addition has been constructed. The roof system has been installed. The exterior brick veneer has been completed. Interior work on the additions continue. The Hardaway High School Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning at Hardaway High School, the approved budget is $6 million. Peach Engineering has designed the initial plan, and the results of the advertisement for the construction manager yielded River City Construction Contracting as the construction manager for this project. Upgrade several areas at Hardaway High School to include, but not limit to, the front administration area, parking area, gym concessions, lobby, canopies, and site work and landscaping. The total cost on this one, the Board approved, is $4 million. Jordan Vocational High School College and Career Academy. Reconfigure spaces to support academic change from Jordan Vocational High School to Jordan High School College and Career Academy. The project is estimated to be $7,469,000. Construction for the grant-funded position, portion of the project is, is complete, and punch list items have been addressed. Construction on the 2020 East Sploß-funded portion of the project. Material delays move the project behind schedule. We are now looking at winter '22, '23 completion, '23, I would say. Jordan Vocational High School, replace HVAC equipment in Buildings 5, 5010, 5040, 5041. Additionally, replace air conditioning equipment in Buildings 5020, 5021, 5030, 5031. Looks like the whole school's getting new air conditioning, with a project a cost of $6,309,000. The HVAC project is substantially complete. However, we are waiting on certain parts to come in to complete the project. Testing and balancing of the HVAC system continues in operating of the air conditioning. The building approximately, but delayed parts for the controls have been put, and the project is behind schedule. The new expected completion is winter '22. Kendrick High School, upgrade Kendrick High School, upgrade several areas of Hardaway and Kendrick, but not limit to the front administration area. It's $4 million at Kendrick for Middle School Fields Upgrade Phase Number Two for Eddie Richards and Veterans Parkway. 2020 East Sploß Field Renovation Project include, but not limited to, scoreboards, goalposts, soccer goals, bleachers, and grading. Currently in the design phase, the project is planned to be advertised in early 2023. Middle School Field Upgrades at Eric Hohn, Blackman Road, and Double Churches. They come from the 2020 Sploß. It's going to include limited to new school, school boards, goalposts, soccer goals, bleachers, and grading. The project is planned to be advertised in early 2023. New Elementary School, number eight, Dawson Elementary Property along Kennedy Street. Consolidate Dawson and St. Mary's Elementary School. The date of approval was 4/19/21. Right now, the total for the school is $37,890,500. Site work continues to include the de-watering of the site. The front building footers continue to be poured. Underground water retention structures continue to be installed. Otis Spencer Stadium, wide multi-stadium, this, the system-wide multi-sport athlete complex that includes the Otis Spencer Stadium is being developed on 38 acres that accommodate 6,000 spectators. The total cost of the new football stadium complex, $27,609,000. Construction is substantially complete, the elevator remains delayed, the stairs will use until the elevator is installed. Elevate school entrances that do not have a secure vestibule, and then create simple drawings of the scope or work for each location. This is approved 117 for $100,000. Win Arts Academy Roofing. Total cost to re-roof it, $834,315 for the Win Arts Academy Roofing. And that looks like all the construction. We'd like to thank all of our voters out there for our East Sploß in 97, 20, 2003, '09, '15, and 2020. Thank you so much. As you can see, we have a lot of stuff going on here for our school district, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. Ms. Williams, bringing up the rear, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 9.01 is your annual budget calendar, and let the games begin as we kick off with the annual budget. They'll take us all the way through June, with called Board Meeting, Public Hearings, for the fiscal year to begin July 1. Please look at that, if you can, if you can plug any of those dates into your calendar, do so now. This should not waver, it's kind of the same we follow every year. Any questions? Takes us to 9 point, just hold on. 9.02, Purchase Exception A and B. You have two items, one for Overdrive, one various vendors to increase threshold for books and textbooks. Are there any questions? Seeing none, 9.03, Purchase Exception C for Maintenance. You have two items, Infinite Campus and Smith Raymond Company. Are there questions on either of those? Seeing none, 9.04, Purchase Exception D, Renewals. You have three items for Crayon Software Experts, Communico, and the Library Foundation. Are there any questions on any of those? Seeing none, that takes us to 9.05, Purchase Exception E, Additional Purchases. You have two items, one from Malone, one from various vendors for equipment supplies and furniture. Any questions on those? 9.06, Purchase Exception F, Invitation to Bid, RFP. You have four items, Net Planner, Solution Z, Demco, and Hardy Chevrolet. Any questions on those? Seeing none, that takes us to Purchase Exception G, Professional Services. You have three items, International Scholarship, Enlarged Vision, and Presence Learning. Are there any questions on those? Item 908 is your monthly sole source and volatile purchases, one for the Civic Center and one for your oil and gas. Any questions? 9.09, Competitively Bid. You have one item under ABM Groups, Non-Athletic Ground Maintenance, and Dreamscape Design for Athletic Field Maintenance. Are there any questions on those?
Yes.
Yes.
I have quite a bit, and I asked, I mean, I posed these questions last Thursday or Friday when I first saw it, and then we also heard from the owner of Outdoor Solutions tonight. I want everybody to note that we are voting, the recommendation is for one that is $400,000 something more annually in cost. I'm interested in what our current budget was for our landscaping. I mean, is this going to be $400,000 more than what we budgeted last year that we now need to figure out how to pay? Yes, so we're already very much over budget usually every year, and we're now going to increase the cost of our landscaping by another four hundred thousand dollars. Thing I found interesting was that this ABM who is getting the bulk of it. Well, I'd like somebody to tell me a little more about them because it was very interesting that all evaluators gave them a near perfect technical score and ranking. Yet I've never even heard of them. I reached out to a friend that was in development and management property-wise all throughout Columbus, and he had never heard of them either. So and from what I heard earlier, they don't really have employees here to do landscaping is what I hear. They kind of outsource it. So I just would like to understand a lot more about why we would be taking on this much more. Again, we're not trying to make it look like the Ritz. We just want the grass cut and the trees trimmed back.
I don't know. There are some cases I don't want just a mowing go.
Good evening, Boyd. Edwin Joseph, Senior Director of Procurement and Supply Management. So to answer your question as far as ABM, ABM is a nationally recognized company, and they are in both landscaping and janitorial. At one time, ABM was one of our vendors, and they too through the RFP process, lost the bid, and then it was awarded to someone else. So we have experience working with ABM, and we know that they're, excuse me? Not with landscaping. We have them experienced with the custodial side.
And did they have their own people or did they not have?
Sorry, did they have their own on-the-ground people or were they kind of outsourcing it through somebody else?
Uh, from what I was informed, they did have their own people. So what they do is they do hire local talent to actually fill in these positions.
Well, I I think Dr. Lewis sent me some more information this afternoon that I would look at, but it really does concern me. As tight as our budget is. I mean, what we're going to kind of pull back on in another area to make this four hundred thousand dollars in our landscaping. And um a little, again, I I understand from reading the email that was sent to us this morning that there was some issues for a few months with Outdoor Solutions. But it sounded like he tried to rectify it and come up with a solution. So it just concerns me anytime I see a drastic change in what we're paying for services.
Right, right. Same same thing with the purchasing department, and um the bid process is a nationally recognized process, both RFP and I T B. And it's not a easy hill or mountain when the purchasing department actually sees this of a of a price discrepancy where we're having to make the decision to say, okay, technical was the higher percentage above and beyond pricing because of the technical qualifications and the technical requirements that we were looking for during the landscaping. Just like you said, in in cutting grass or landscaping, it doesn't seem to be a complex task, but it is very complex, and it comes with a lot of risk and liability, especially at the school district level. So we want to make sure that not only is our landscape appearance up to par, we also want to make sure that we're not putting damage on any of our landscaping that is currently in place, athletic fields, or even some of the schools that that, you know, are trying to build up their their front curb appeal, as as we say. So I don't want to take it lightly that, you know, four hundred thousand dollar increase is is something that we're we're scoffing at. It is definitely a hard pill to swallow. But the process of having individual independent evaluators that do not collaborate, that do not communicate amongst themselves. What we do is we hand out the packets and explain to them what they are reviewing. The evaluators are reviewing the technical requirements of the bidder's submittals. Once they finish and they score, they are not collaborating again and with the scores. What they do is they send the scores independently to the purchasing department. The purchasing department now takes those scores, runs it through a rubric, and we we just collaborate with the with the financial part. The financial part is not shared with the evaluation team. And the reason we do that is so that way you don't have a bias of a financial of a evaluator saying, hey, why do I need to evaluate if I already like the lowest price? So it's made this way so that way there is no bias and there is no collusion.
Well, I think I've expressed concern about that before too, because like I tell my children, I can't compare two dresses you want unless you tell me how much they cost. You know, I I always think that, you know, to give it a pure evaluation, you should have some idea of what the finances are. If you're really going to pay that much more, are they worth that much more? I think Dr. Lewis has sent me the information that ABM submitted because I was curious as to how they wowed everybody so much that they really had like a near perfect technical score for a company, like I said, that I don't know of anybody that's had an experience with here locally.
Understand, um, I just.
I just want to make sure everybody aware of kind of what we are agreeing to and have a moment of pause about it because it gives me a lot of heartache.
Ms. Tillery.
Thank you, Ms. McCray, Ms. Chambers.
Ms. Tillery.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One thing, do we get any kind of clarification on, because four hundred thousand dollars is a lot on, you know, how they're graded or any of that? You may have sent it to us before, but I've just not seen a discrepancy this large. And why last time, and again, I have no relationship with the guy that was here earlier, but he was told that another company received the bid because it was a hundred thousand dollars lower. And then this time, he's four hundred thousand dollars lower, and he's told, well, this is because it's on a grading system. I mean, I deal with bids all the time, blind bids, all kind of different bids. And so I just don't understand when it changes, there's, I mean, there's got to be a good reason for four hundred thousand a year.
Yes, there are speculations as what the the reasoning could be. It could be that the vendor who who, you know, was here this morning. And I and you know, before I jump into this, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Villegas that we do have a lot of communication together. He came up and I and I and I would like to let local vendors know, you have my number. You can call me at any time. We do have programs in place to help local vendorship. And and as, you know, Tony said that my conversation with him this afternoon, he then reevaluated the the presentation and he changed it. That's what we're here to do is actually assist local vendors in submitting bids, assist local vendors in doing business with the district. We do run a local vendorship, how to do business with the district every year, and vendors then, you know, zoom in and we explain how the process works. Even to the point where vendors can ask us before the bid goes live, how to submit a proper bid submittal, and we will actually educate them on that. This information is not, it's public information. It's knowledge gained. It's not something that we need to hide and and squirrel squirrel away. We've actually helped vendors go off of, you know, basic standard, trying to do business with the district and actually go into a cooperative and help them, you know, sign up with cooperatives. We will help local vendors, and we also give a little leeway to local vendors for performance evaluations on the on their job site. So if you're working for the district and and your performance does shift a little bit, we don't automatically debar you, which stops you from working with the district. We actually have availability to work with you and have you recalibrate and kind of go back at it and, you know, let's see what you can do. You know, so there are things that we do for local vendorships, and we will continue to support local vendorships the best that we can as long as we stay within the lines of legality. So your question about bidding, I wasn't here in twenty fifteen, so I'm not too sure of the bid process. But the bid process has the ability to change between invitation of bid and RFP based on the technical specifications. Now that we have new new stadium, and a new stadium may require a little bit more treatment. So what we did this time, actually on the support of local vendorship, is we regionalized the bid process. Instead of sending out the the big district landscaping, what we did was let's start breaking this up into smaller pieces. And that was a recommendation through a conversation that I had with Mr. Villegas, saying, hey, you know, how can we help in situations like this? Where local vendors want to get in, but we're too big. And one of the things I recommended to him was what happens if we shrink the the location? Would that help a local vendorship? You know, and 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 to his surprise, he said, yeah, that might even help get some local vendors to participate. And that's why this bid does look different than any other bid you'll actually see because it is now regionalized. We did break it down into smaller pieces hoping to have more vendors participate. We did get a a local vendor that actually participated, and it was very exciting to find out that he actually advanced and became, I believe he's like the third or fourth place on the athletic side. So things like that is what we're actually working on. So, um, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And then like on this, it says there was a bid received from Burris Lawn Service, but I don't see that number anywhere. And then actually Outdoor Solutions, it says no response. So I just didn't know if that was just a glitch maybe, or am I reading it wrong?
No, what happens is because of the 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 regionalization, what we what we offered was you have the the different regions, the three regions. Plus, you had the ability to take out athletics, and you had the ability to bid on the entire project, or you had the ability to bid on just the grounds minus athletics.
In other words, he didn't bid on all of it.
Correct, yes. So because of the variety that was that was presented, some vendors actually bid on certain portions of it and didn't bid on the entire packet. Some vendors only bid on one section and not the other sections.
Let me just interject some historical observation. We went from the regionalization because we were spending a lot of money to the whole big giant thing to save money. So now we're back to regionalizing so we can have better service and and allow and allow. So you're saying they're not regionalizing? What do y'all call, what do you call a regionalizing?
So I have a question.
I think Ms. Tillery's still got a question.
Yeah.
Oh, you still? So the the one that said like Burris Lawn Service, they we 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 received a bid, we really, that one didn't count? That wasn't part of it?
That one I would have to go back and take a look at because the section that you're speaking about, I would have to go back and make sure that we are talking apples for apples. So when you're saying we didn't receive a bid, we might not have received one for that particular section.
Oh, okay. It was just on the board docs connected to it, the request for proposal twenty-three dash zero one one. Okay. It's right above all of the purchasing department received proposals from eight vendors. But I can email it to you. I can forward it to you.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Chambers.
Okay. So my question is about the how the evaluators are scoring. I'm assuming that your evaluation is much like a teacher would use a rubric to grade a paper. And if we are both looking for the same thing, then there would be a small margin of, I may give them an eighty-five, and she may give them a ninety or ninety-two. But in some cases, there's like a three hundred point gap for evaluators. So can you tell me what information was the evaluator given? Because it seems like in this case, they may have been looking for different things. Because if someone gave the same company a two hundred, and then one evaluator gave them a four hundred or a five hundred, that's a big gap. It's not like fifty points, twenty points. That's three hundred points. So obviously, were we all looking for the same criteria or how objective?
Right, so. So first, I'd like to apologize. I wouldn't know what the student teacher rubric would look like. So, no, I I I am in education, and tomorrow I I will I will be at one of the the schools doing the presentations for the for the students. So I'm very excited about that for tomorrow. But the rubrics, the evaluators have a have a pointing system, so it's a one to ten point scale that they use. In the RFP, section five point eight actually identifies the scope of work that we're looking for. So what we do is we educate the the evaluators to say, review section point five point eight, familiarize yourself as you go through the whole bid packet. Because they're not looking at one or two bids. They're looking at about eight different bids. And the evaluators, you know, spend their their afternoons and their weekends, and I and I definitely apologize for the weekends, that, you know, to go ahead and review these packages and then come up with a scoring between one to ten. So as they look at it, they're looking at technical expertise. They're looking at technical submission. Did you give us enough information to explain what we requested? Because as we request these items, some companies may go in in depth explaining what they're going to offer the district, and some other companies may just keep it very surface level and shallow. And that then turns it, the score is a little bit different.
But if I'm evaluator, for example, evaluator three. Gave an overall score, technical evaluation, two hundred and thirty-five. But evaluation evaluator five gave that same company five hundred and twenty. So one is saying, oh, you're doing an excellent job, and the other one is saying you are near failing. And and I apologize for using educational terms, but that's my background. So I have to, you know, put it in a a language that I can relate to. But it seems that that is a huge disparity between the two. You don't normally see that. Four hundred and twenty, five hundred and twenty, but not two thirty-five and then five hundred and forty. Would you explain that?
Yes, so, you know, and my apologies for the for the comment about the school part of it. But but just to let you know, so when we do run across what we would consider an aggressive evaluator, we then go ahead and try to reevaluate whether or not it was a fair evaluation. Sometimes we will take the score the the scores and scrub them, which means we basically give the vendor full tens to kind of get a comparison to see if this moves the needle. If it doesn't really move the needle, then, you know, no harm, no foul. Now, if it does move the needle, now we go back to the evaluator and ask for additional information, additional information. And the additional information is more about why did you score the vendor the way you did? And that's because the needle did move to a significant amount. In this situation, some of the low scores, we did run those through the 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 scrubber just to kind of get an idea if this requires additional information.
So this sounds like you have a process for the process, all right? And so what we are concerned with as board members is, is this process fair? Is this a new process? If this is what you've been using, and it's and it's a fair, it's presented as a fair process, and then you have these checkpoints and checks and balances in place for this process, then do we have any additional questions?
Ms. Buckner?
Okay, she hit it.
I was looking at the information that Ms. Chambers just presented with the two thirty-five and the five forty. Okay, so that two thirty-five is the only one that's out of context. The rest of them are similar, four sixty, five forty, five forty, five twenty, four fifty-nine. You have that one evaluator on that particular item. He is also lower on another. That same evaluator is lower on.
Another vendor, another bidder?
On ABM, that same one is lower, but fairly consistent on the landscaping and the.
Is there a question? No question?
My comment, when Ms. Chambers presented the information, it seemed overwhelming, like that was. Yeah, just in that one thing. But when you look at it in context, all that was the only one. You know, in 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 other words, like to dispel the information when it was just one per, all the rest of them seemed fairly, it seems like the other evaluators were consistent. It was one evaluator that was out of context with.
But that was kind of my point, Ms. Buckner, because that skews the score. So if I have four one hundreds, but I make a zero, that's going to skew my.
My grade. And I look at that the same way with these numbers. So you have an evaluation evaluator that gave five fifty, five forty, four forty-five, one forty-five. That's that's a huge like disparity.
Just to just to clarify a little bit additional information, the evaluators do not give that large score. What they do is they go through the technical and they score each section one to ten. So as they score the each section's one to ten, we run it through our rubrics, and that gives us our final number. And that's where you're seeing the 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 largest rate. So from the evaluator's perspective, they're scoring one to ten. I like to, you know, technical number one, they're going, hey, okay, this one, they they met the mark. I'm going to give them a five or a six. And then another evaluator may say, hey, you know what? This has a lot of more information. I'm going to give them a nine or a ten. Not enough information compared to another evaluation. I'm going to give these guys a four or five or three or four. So it so it varies. So from the eyes of the evaluator, they're scoring from one to ten. They're not really seeing the bigger numbers. Once we run that through our compiler, that's where the bigger numbers get us closer to our one thousand points.
So so for, just for clarity sake, can I get a copy of what the evaluator was scoring for?
Oh, yeah.
And I think that will help me. We don't usually see huge disparities, and it may be the way the question was written or something like that. It would help me if I saw a copy of what exactly were the evaluators asked to score?
Yeah.
What were they asked to score?
Yeah, we could send you. Yeah, we could send you that. We could actually send you a copy of the 5.8 technical and we could also send you a copy of what the evaluation template looks like that the evaluators would actually receive. It would be a blank copy unless there's additional information that you would require and then that way we could accommodate...
I think the blank copy would be appropriate because we are not supposed to be in this process.
Correct.
We have to stay in our lane, we just want to know what...
Yes, yeah, we could get that sent to you.
Ms. McCray, I think so.
This is my final plug, that keep in mind that this is a three-year contract. So what we agree to now is what we will pay additional for three years and that in the overall score, it boils down to about 100 different points, but in the overall money, it's 400 and something thousand dollars.
Per year.
Per year. Per year, per year. So that's four times three is 1.2 million. But it's going to cost the district over three years based on... And I get that it's a good process, but that still doesn't mean we have to do it. I mean, we can kind of go, "Oh, hey, this is way out of our budget bounds and we need to, you know, go back and relook at it." I mean, I think we can do that, right? I mean, I don't think that we have to just say, "Well, yeah, we're going to go with spending more money because that's the best score we got."
Understood, understood.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
There is a weight given to the technical and a weight given to the financial. What does that weigh?
60/40, 60% technical, 40% financial. The 60% technical is based on the advanced technological specifications that we actually put in the RFP to make sure that we have that best vendor actually step up. Not to diminish all the other vendors that actually submitted. We're just saying that the technical was a 60/40 split.
And I just have one quick question, sorry. The five evaluators, I'll probably let you know this again. Are they local? Are they people who have relationships with these companies?
They're MCSD employees. MCSD employees, non-hourly employees. Because since you are utilizing your weekends and your after-hours, we have to use administrative staff to actually participate in this.
It does make me feel a little bit better that the people doing this evaluation know that when we spend an extra $416,000 a year, it directly impacts their budget or their school, you know, somebody who's...
They won't have the financials.
But see, that's the problem. They don't really see the finances when they're scoring it. So they don't realize that they're costing us an extra $400,000 a year.
But, in, two points, and it's going to answer both questions at the exact same time. Yes, the financials are not given to the evaluators, but the subject matter expert that actually initiated the bid, that person's finances, that person's budget, they are aware of the final result. And at that time, they make the assessment to say, "Yes, my budget will be able to support it. I have to ask for additional funds," or "No, my budget will not." So that subject matter expert has that ability to look at the final totality on it.
I would love for that subject matter expert to go ahead and tell me how we're going to find that $400,000. That would make me feel a lot better.
That subject matter expert is Dr. Lewis and the treasurer.
What other area, we're going to cut back on?
And Dr. has his...
Well, now, they, that subject, they do that when they do the budget. I mean, when the budget is whatever we feel is necessary or whatever the superintendent and the day-to-day operation people find that is within the budget, that find that we can sustain that.
That's right.
Those are the people who do it now. Some of us, we can vote against it, you know, but I'm just saying, but these are the people who analyze the budget and make the decisions. As we sit here and ask questions, we decide whether we want to go 444,000. That's what you do next week when we vote. You know, you decide whether, now, in my personal opinion, as I told him when I came in here,
Get a little closer.
When I came in here today, from, since I've been on the board, that purchasing department, the ones that retire and the ones that we hire, it seems to be, in my opinion, I don't want to make anybody else mad, those seem to be the best people that we have in the district. I'm just saying. So what it means is that I trust these people now. Now, $400,000, $400,000 is a lot of trust. I understand where you're coming from, you know. But, yeah, one point, when you add three plus three, that is a million, that's a lot of money. But as I listen to the process that he's been explaining, do we want him to analyze and find another process? It seems to me that we might be going into another level. If we want to do this, then are we asking him to find another process? Or do, see, I don't, you know...
We just want to make sure the process is fair.
And that we understand it.
And that we understand it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying. It's true. Now, it's true, but you see, when you start doing... You, no, no, but...
The equal, equal weight.
I don't think anybody has a, like, an over budget. But by analogy, if we look at how we did, when we were discussing the budget and budget items and how we present them to the board, we had, we have the professional items. If we go back to the finance, we split the... No, we're not going back. But I'm just saying, how we section it off, how we section that off, you know. And we did sole sources, professional items, and then we... There were certain items that we said that we chose, the sole items, the sole source items, you know, we just had to pay for them no matter how much they cost. Professional items, we said that if they had value, we wouldn't weigh them with another, we wouldn't bid on them because of the value of what we did with that particular source, we would just go with that source. So what I was saying is by analogy, when they split it with technical and 40%, you know, I guess it was the weight that was put on the technical means, what we valued as what was important, the product, to the outcome of the product, with the technical skills and stuff, that we valued that and that was most important here. Now, finance is very important, but I'm just saying, we have to change the process if we, we have to think about that too when we start...
But we wouldn't know how to change the process. And so in layman's term, I think that...
Let's wrap this discussion up so we can get...
Yeah, we need to move on, but I think, I think that in layman's term is we have a purchasing department and they have all of these layers so that the process is fair. And also that we are not, to have a process in place so that we are not penny wise and pound foolish to evaluate all of these aspects. And I just don't believe that they're just, you know, writing blank checks. A part of their process is to have some fiscal responsibility in all of this. And so, and they're bringing us back to results, okay? We have a, we have a division that handles, this is called purchasing, and we are voting up or down the results. And so hopefully we can get all of our questions answered without getting down into talking about changing the process that we wouldn't know how to start.
But it bothers us too, I mean, it really does. I know this bothers me, but we got to follow a process that we feel like is fair and consistent. But to that end, we did look at some other options just to see where we were.
Yes, so just for research purposes, what we did is we did run a 50/50 split and the result was still the same. It didn't deviate first and second place winner. And that was, you know, just once again, just to run a research to see if that would change the needle. So once again, it's not, you know, the process is a sturdy process. It's a nationally recognized process and we've practiced it and we actually get stricter with every step that we go to make it fair for all. For all to bid, we constantly make it fair across the board. And just a point of reference, it is a one-year contract with two optional years of renewal. The two optional years of renewal are left between us and the vendor. If we want to renew or not renew, and the vendor gets an opportunity to renew or not renew, as per board policy.
And last statement, did you have something? Not unless you need me to. Okay. Not at this point, thank you.
Understood, understood.
Okay, that takes us to 9.10 purchase order increases. You have, I think it's three items before you, let me get out, I'm sorry, five items before you. Do you have any questions on any of those items? 9.11 is emergency PO request. This is for $19,250 for a temporary boiler at Kendrick. Any questions on that? Seeing none, 9.12 is your monthly budget adjustments for division of teaching and learning, school nutrition, libraries and operations and facilities. Any questions on those? Last, well, not last, but next, 9.13 is our donations. I'd like to point out we have over $20,000 in donations from various entities. We appreciate that support. 9.14 is your monthly financial statements. Would you like me to go through the financial statements?
I think we can read that.
That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. This has been really a great work session that we have thoroughly vetted all of these items individually, line by line, and asked a lot of great questions, had great presentations, but we are not done.
Some of you are.
I need a motion to go in. For, all right, and we're going to stay in here. Is there a second? And all in favor with a hand vote as we wave goodbye while we go into executive session. Oh, I'm so sorry, thank you. Thank you, operations and facilities, we were so busy eating. Thank you so very much.